Same mail, same email.
We still got four minutes left.
That's all good right now.
The times he's done it was fastest news we've ever had.
Usually they don't put much on the, on the agenda. They know the mayor's not going to be there.
Also, yeah, when Bob was in Germany. Remember me that month was like 120 minutes.
Like half an hour.
It was during a, usually generally quiet time anyway. But yeah, it was, it was very. Next back. Even though it's a little frost.
Oh, yeah?
Stocking.
Actually, I read all the names. You probably know all of them.
You have to read all the names.
My spreadsheet.
That's a nightmare. When I used to do high school football games, I'd go to the parents' night, which is like fifty names. That's still stressing me out because I'm getting where I don't recognize kids' names anymore for the poll. So, ah, it, but then I gotta read their name, you know.
I call to order the Waverly City Council for May eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, this becomes our agenda unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the May fourth, two thousand fifteen minutes as distributed also by our city clerk?
Move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, those are official minutes. We welcome as our guest councilperson for meeting number two, Russell O'Trone. It's good to have you with us. Any comments you would like to make as we enter into this meeting?
No, I think all ready to get it rolling.
All right. That's a good guest councilperson. This is the date, time and place for a public hearing on an amendment to the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. City administrator, a brief synopsis might be helpful before the public weighs in.
Uh, before that, I'll turn it over to Jack, our finance director.
Excuse me. I think that's supposed to be two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Correct, it's two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year.
Yep. And corrected. Okay, as stated in the memo, uh, the budget amendment is required by the state of Iowa if there is any program that is going to exceed the original budget. Okay. Um, the, the budget form is, which was published in the Waverly paper on May fifth, is in the packet. And that, the next couple of sheets show the individual departments with the program totals by expenditures on the first sheet. And then the second sheet is the adjusted budget for the, the revenue side. We're only required to do the expenditure side, but just so that you can see where some of the expenses are offset by revenue, we show the revenue side, especially with the capital projects. And that seems to be the largest area for the budget amendment. So I can go through the line items if, if you'd like, or I can answer any questions that might come up. We will have council discussion after a while. We'll do public hearing first. I think any, these comments might be sufficient for public hearing. Okay. Okay. This time I invite any comments from the public. Public hearing is open.
Dwayne Little Waverly. In a memo, it, it says expenditures are going to be two point nine, um, one eighty of additional expenses. And it's not going to affect the tax levy. So that would indicate, I would believe, that that is borrowed money that two point nine, one eighty is. It's funding different projects from different sources. That's on top of the fifteen point something million dollars that we've already borrowed. A few weeks ago, or maybe a week ago, Waterloo paper had a story in the front page about escalating debt in Waterloo. Apparently, they haven't been looking at Waverly because our debt is escalating at a fairly rapid pace, putting us up on to the higher levels of our borrowing capacities. And we have a project coming up with the Green Bridge that we will not have any funding for because we're borrowing to our limits. So I just want the public to aware of the dollars amounts of what our bond indebtedness has been happening in the last year, year and a half. It's, it's a serious thing.
Thank you, all taken. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I close the hearing, invite a motion.
I move approval of resolution fifteen seventy-seven, approving amending the fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion.
I guess I'd just like either Jack or, or Phil to kind of comment on, on the debt levy and, and where we are as approach to that because we're paying off our debt as we're taking new debt on. So we're really not raising the debt, and we're not even close to what we could by law reach as far as the thresholds. There's still quite a bit of a gap there.
Correct, and Jack can speak to that better than I can. But first, maybe we can talk about, if it's okay with you, Tim, the two point nine million change in the source of revenue.
We certainly can. Most, most of that is just a, a timing change in the capital projects. We had two big capital projects come up. One was the Cedar River Parkway and one, of course, you all know, which we're looking at the bonds today for the dry, for the dry run project. So it's, it's money that's being used from the money that we've already borrowed, so.
It's not new money.
It's not new money, no. It's all money that has gone through council, councils approved it. And I wish I could put my finger exactly on the debt capacity that we're at, where, where we are. And I'm guessing it's around the sixty percent. I think PFM was here several times talking about our debt capacity and the tax levy rate and not going over the two thirty-seven, I believe. And I think we're right on track with that, so. More council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hold a second, go ahead. As I was looking through this, I guess I, um, there's a lot of line items. I wonder, would, would this be normal for, I mean, I'm looking at a, you know, the, the revenue side, there's seventeen million dollars in changes. I guess maybe stop me, Jack, if I'm, but there are like seventeen million, forty-eight thousand in changes on a twenty-four million dollar budget. Is, is that normal?
That has to do with the two bond issues that we had, which were about fifteen point nine million. We had one in the fall and then we had one in just recently. So is that normal when you plan a budget a year and a half ahead of time? You know, remember, we set this budget and, and certi, and certified it March fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. A lot has changed since then. All gone through coun, council, all been approved, projects that we felt were necessary.
Yeah, I guess my, my only question, maybe you can help me, is maybe if I, if I was looking at a three-year period, it would all kind of wash out. But in a one-year period, it, it could cause some, in my mind, it could cause some serious issues just from the ability to repay debt and so forth. I'm just thinking, you know, think of our personal checking account, if our personal checking account, you know, if we make twenty thousand dollars and it changes or, you know, three-fourths of that.
I, I think one of the things to, to consider is that while this shows the, the amendment to the bond sales, that's not the debt service. And so when you think about the timing and you think about the issues, when it comes to bonds, these are monies that carry through fiscal years for use. And they're also structured on ten, eleven, twelve-year paybacks. And so I think that's part of the difference here than when you look at like your monthly cash flow and your checking account.
Yeah, I'm oversimplifying it, but yeah.
You know, it might be similar to borrowing money for a house. All of a sudden, you get a good deal on to buy a house and you go, okay, I'm going to go out and borrow three hundred thousand dollars. All of a sudden, you'd have to count that as revenue, but you're going to spend it over a period of time by making your mortgage pay, payments. I mean, if you can look at it that way.
So aside for the bud, aside from the bond issues, how much of that is just normal overrun on budget, is it?
Well, if you look at the individual, if you look at the change column, I go through and talk to each one of the departments and the directors and try to determine by March thirty-first whether we're going to exceed our budget or not. Generally, I'm pretty lenient as far as, you know, I mean, this doesn't mean that this is going to happen as far as going over budget. It's just our projection. We have to kind of stay under our budget to meet the state guidelines. So if you look at the individual line items, especially like in public safety, we are projecting any increase at all for police or fire or ambulance, except in the special revenue funds, um, some tri-county training and stuff for, for the police. We're expecting to maybe be five thousand dollars over. So you can go through those. We, you know, we have repairs and maintenance on vehicles. There's an accident, something comes up, you've got to repair it. And that's generally why we try to keep a good balance, you know, fund, the fund balance.
Yeah, I don't recall, you know, certainly nothing in the fifteen million dollar range, seventeen million dollar range like we've had this year, but that's due to the bond issues of, of an adjustment. We've, we've had a few, it's usually smaller adjustments, a few hundred thousand, half a million. In that range typically, we might have had one the year that we did the dam, I don't recall.
It's possible.
Or the flood byouts or something with that. But, um, most of it is in a smaller range, it's, would fit within that.
Are they mostly over or are they mostly under? I mean, are we on track normally to go over budget or under budget?
I think what we've always done is we do the, do it to possibly increase and then come July, it's usually, we're, we're probably going to back down because of what we actually do spend. Because you can't raise it suddenly to the area. Right.
So if you look at quick, just the business type activities on sheet one, those budget amendments show an annual savings of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars compared to the budget. So you look at most of those accounts and they're zero. Some of them are five thousand, twenty thousand, but then you get into staff adjustments. Then you also have wage savings that offset those, jet vac savings that offset that. So overall, I think this was our, one of our lighter years in recent history with any amendments at the end. And most of it, the bulk of it is, is small adjustments and a net savings to the business type activities. So I think the departments did a really good job managing their budget. We've seen that in past budget settings, and I think we see it here again at the end of the year.
You know, the other thing that comes up as far as the projects, and that seems to be where the, you know, where three million dollars is, is you start looking at projects and you go, okay, well, we're going to spend a million dollars. Well, maybe that, maybe all of a sudden, we've got a three million dollar project and we think we're going to spend a million dollars in the fourteen, fifteen year, but the project moves along a little quicker than what we thought. And all of a sudden, we're spending two million dollars this year instead of one million dollars. And then the following year, we're only going to spend a million instead of the two million that we might have thought. So it's kind of a moving, uh, target, I guess.
And I think that's why we budget for capital projects continuously rather than annual by annual.
More comments? Thank you, Jack, for helping us. Roll call vote, please.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Cade.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Resnachek. Waldstein.
Yes.
Resolution fifteen dash seventy-seven is unanimously approved. This is the date, time and place for a public hearing on the planned specs and form of contract and estimated cost of our airport runway reconstruction project projected out at one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. The hearing is now open.
Dwayne Little Waverly. I noticed in the resolution, we use the word improvements. And in the case of the airport, improvements means enlarging the runway by ten feet, which then requires new runway lights. In the past, we've used the word improvements to mean restoring a seal-coated street with a seal-coated top surface. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of wondering which interpretation of the word improvements is the city using. And second of all, if the FAA will, will approve expenditures for maintenance of the existing runway, then how are we getting them to pay for the additional ten feet, which is actually a, an upgrade from what we have? And if the council, and the third thing for the council to consider is if, this is the really end game of this is the, the four hundred foot extension and the runway safety zones that would be required to, to build the four hundred foot extension. So if the council believes that a four hundred foot extension in the, what we call the safety zones, is a necessity and that to get that necessity, we're going to be using eminent domain because there's definitely property owners that do not want to sell. We've already found out the ones that will sell for a little extra money, but we have some that will not sell. We can't hardly say that we're not taking somebody's property by, when we put, propose to put an easement through the middle of their house on how high they can build part of their house and the other half they can't. It's problematic. The council should be making decision now whether or not that extension is going to happen because then the ten-foot widening of the runway now makes sense. But if you're not going to, then the ten-foot widening of the runway now does not make any sense. And it just increases the project that we're spending more money on at a time when it's not going to create any real benefit yet.
Thank you. Other public input? Hearing none, I close the hearing, a formal motion.
Move approval of resolution fifteen seventy-eight, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the Waverly Municipal Airport Runway Reconstruction Project.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion. And also, if we could, on the council, answer the improvement question, how widening by ten foot can be an improvement would be helpful.
Give me that first.
Or the council, go ahead, city administrator.
Sure. Uh, so there is a reason we split these into two projects, one being the rehab and widening of the runway and the other being the extension, knowing that the widening of the runway does not impact any adjacent property owners. It's all done within the owned right of way. That's actually a recommendation given, given to us by the FAA because fifty feet for a paved runway is fairly narrow. And also with new lighting and upgraded LED lighting, it will pay for itself in a short period of time because now I believe we use high wattage incandescent lights out there. So it's something that has a short return on investment and a much better maintenance life.
Thank you. Council?
I was just gonna, curious as to which house where the easement's going right through the middle of.
Me, Mark Schmidt.
Going through the middle of the house?
Yes.
There'll be an easement that restricts them from adding on to the house.
Adding on to the house.
Wasn't it just height-wise? I mean, height-wise, oh, height-wise too, not, yeah.
I guess for me, you know, I, I'm not in favor of the airport expansion, never have been. I don't think it's needed, nor do I think we need to take people's homes. So to me, this proves the FAA is going to continue to ma, maintain our airport and we're getting a brand-new runway for a hundred thousand dollars or something like that. So it's a pretty good deal. So, you know, I, I would vote for this because it maintains our runway as it is and keeps it viable for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, just the way it is now. I don't see any reason to keep moving forward with the airport expansion. That seems to have stalled out. It's been going on for at least two years now, I think, so. But everyone has their own opinion on that, obviously.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Lampy.
No.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Cade.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resnachek. Angus.
Yes.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Resolution fifteen dash seventy-eight is passed by a six to one vote. I now invite public comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda that the public may have.
Good evening. I'm Anelia Dimitrova, and I have the pleasure of being the editor of the Waverly newspaper. I'm here tonight as, I, I want to offer my presence and also my knowledge of the newspaper business to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the agendas, the publication of the agendas, the council agendas in the paper. So, um, does the council have any, any questions regarding how the agendas are published, why they are published, and, and how the process works? I have been approached by several council members individually, and I've answered questions, I, I hope to their satisfaction. But I'm also here to speak to the council in, as a whole body and also answer questions on the record so that we are all on the same page. No pun intended, the newspaper being a page business.
We have, uh, if you, if you have enough time in the evening, we have this coming up, agenda, new business item number seven or something like that.
I'd be happy to step back and, and come back again if that's on the agenda for tonight.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anelia. Mr. Little?
I've had several people call me and ask me if part of the Dry Run Creek project of clinging out the Dry Run and, and sloping and reshaping it, if that included clinging out the Dry Run next to the bowling alley, which has a island of grass growing down the middle of it, a bunch of rocks throwed in there. Very much in need of, of maintenance. Uh, same thing applies to the Dry Run out by the Sail Barn area. There's grass growing right down the middle of that because there's sod in the middle of that concrete swell. And it's, it comes from a lack of maintenance. So then the next question I heard a lot of was if they can't maintain the old part of the Dry Run, what kind of maintenance is the new Dry Run going to get? And how are we going to keep scrub trees and volunteer trees from growing up into the grass embankments? When the grass embankments won't be being mowed on a regular basis, they'll be left to grow to the heights of the natural grass, which would encourage volunteer trees and, and a variety of non, of plant life that we would not want in, in there that in the past have taken over the Dry Run. So those are the two questions about the maintenance of the, of the Dry Run. The second one is, on Beacon, I've noticed that there's valuations being placed on non-taxing buildings. Take the hospital for one. And my question is, are those valuations included in the total valuations for the city of Waverly on which we base our borrowing capacity? Because the non-tax buildings would not be contributing to the two point six, seven, I think it is, debt limit, or debt levy. They'd only be contributing to them when we raise sewer water rates, which we'll probably be doing in July to go along with the bonds that we just issued.
Okay. That it?
Yep, three things.
The Dry Run maintenance has been much discussed, I think, already several times. Ask one more response.
We can certainly have staff take a look at the bowling alley area and the Sail Barn area. And then as far as the revegetated areas, we'll approach those like we do our other prairie space and open space ma, areas. And we can either mechanically control for that or use certain herbicides to control for unwanted vegetation.
Thank you. Jack, on the hospital, going towards their total valuation? No, I do not believe that they're included in the total. Thank you.
Tim Brightford, Waverly. Not sure if this is the proper place or what the agenda, but I guess there was a resolution out there that was shared on the support from the council or the mayor towards a project that was submitted to the state. And I don't know, just seemed like there's been a lot of conversation, the validity of that resolution. And I guess I don't know, again, the proper timing of when to bring that up, but.
This was fine. It was fine. Public comments continue.
Jim Hurley, Shell Rock. I work for Signature Realty in Waverly, and it's my job to know the status of housing in Waverly. I've sold a number of houses on West Bremer, and those people have asked, is the Bremer Court project full steam ahead? people have asked, is the Bremer Court project full steam ahead? And to my knowledge, the answer was no. I've heard rumors now that there is another grant and that has received support. I have historically followed projects, the scattered sites, or the Langenmarsh, or the Benda, or the Lampy, or the Dane. And I was not aware that the council had given approval for a grant to proceed with the Bremer Court project. So, I, as I said, this is kind of my business to know what's happening, and I don't. And if I don't, I don't think probably other people do either. I think there are two issues here. Issue number one, which I think there's still a great discussion about, is their need for that project. And number two would be the mechanism of how the support for the grant has proceeded.
Right. First, may I all comment? The, this has not come before the council. We had two approvals of the council, however, of Bremer Court operation, as we did with the Lampy property. And I wrote a letter on their behalf saying that we've had past support. I gave my own reasons for heavily favoring the ability to put affordable housing into the Waverly community and having a project that might enable that to happen. But this will be before the council in the future. I'm just saying what we've, as a council, have done in the past twice, and where I stand. So, that's as far as it goes. It hasn't had a council review. You can come back up, Jim. Go ahead.
I happened to be at that meeting, and my recollection was that there were, I think, one withdrawn, and there were still two that were under consideration. And I believe that the council voted to support the application of those two. They did not vote to support one or the other, however.
Hmm. Well, we voted to support both, and I gave a wonderful letter on Dan's behalf and Judy. Correct. And, but we weren't awarded by the city, but, I mean, by the state, but...
I just remember Council and Gade, I was trying to make a distinction between whether one was supported over the other, and I believe that it...
We didn't support one over the other. We supported both.
I believe you supported both the application process, not the project themselves. That's my recollection of that discussion.
That's the way the CDBG worked, was that we had to su- support two projects for that round of funding. But that round of funding did not include any city funding going along with it as a requirement. It just required a council support.
Correct. And this is, this is a completely different entity as far as where the money's come from, what the grant is, you know, how it's, how it's structured. It's not, it's not the CBDG or, you know.
And there was also council action in 2013 for Section 42 funding, and a resolution put forward at that time to create a urban renewal area, low-income tax credit TIF. And that resolution was dependent on, awarded a Section 42 fund. So, people have asked, well, is that resolution still effective? And what we've said all along is no, that the developers would have to come back before the commission and the council to request new funding for new, new grant applications.
But that, so when you say that, but part of the requirements for this state funding that the new project got, part of the state requirement was that it already had city funding in place and was voted on.
Correct. And we didn't, we didn't...
There's no way it should have gotten accepted because the letter that the mayor sent stated that there was past support and stated the resolution for that, but didn't state what year it was for.
Well, and we had had further conversations with the state about that, and I told them the same thing I just told you, and we've told them the same thing all along, is that it will take additional action from the council. So, how and why in Des Moines, I don't know. But what the mayor said in his letter and what we've relayed to them as well with that Resolution 1399, which they have a copy of, is the same information.
So, the previous com- the, the previous communication that you've had with council is that this has already been approved for the grant? Is that correct?
This has been approved by the state and will need council review for any local funding.
But as far as the state is concerned, they required a resolution from the city to approve this funding, which they have received none.
Which they, we, we never sent them. We didn't have a resolution to send them.
Because there is not one.
Correct. And that's why we told them if, if for these types of projects, they will need new council consideration because the old resolution...
Does not apply.
Does not apply.
Correct. So then why did the mayor's letter infer that it did apply? I guess is the big question.
Well, I don't know that the mayor's letter didn't infer that.
If you read it that way, it does. But, I guess, that's how it got accepted with state funding. Their requirement was very specific that it had to have city...
Communication from staff said that it, the project had been approved from the state. I think it was very clear in that.
I don't think that's exactly the wording that was used in the letter. I think the letter said something, and we can, we'll present the letter to everybody so you can see it. But I think the, that what the letter said is council has been supportive of similar projects at this location in the past. Not that there's any funding awarded.
Specifically, it was the resolution and an amount of money.
That it does. We were not the applicants. We were trying to be responsive to a request to the city, and we have said all along that any request for funding for a new project at the site will need to be considered independently. And that has not occurred yet.
So, but I think this, the way I read the, so I went, went online, read the, the application. As, as Dan said, it requires a resolution from council. It also requires a local match. So, this was a competitive bid. Other towns missed out because they approved it based on a resolution from the council. It didn't actually occur. So, so I would be okay with this as long as the city of Waverly sends them a letter and states that this was awarded without a resolution and the city council has not approved this.
That's, that is the communication we've had with them in writing, is that any past resolutions do not exist and any, any consideration for this project is yet to be made by the council.
Right.
Can you forward that communication to council so we have...
My understanding is several people, I, I didn't get around to it yet, but my understanding is several people have actually called the state, and they were surprised that the resolution was for something that was previous and completely different.
And the intent of the letter was to say that it was previous, but it was also to make it very clear where the mayor stands, that I think we need affordable housing. I think this is an opportunity to have such, and that'll be a later debate. But I'm stating where I'm coming as mayor, and that's that.
I'm not so sure that...
No money, no money has been committed yet.
No money has been committed.
That's what we told the state.
All I'm, all I'm saying is what we've done previously as a council and where I stand on the issue.
To, to even be accepted by the state for an application, money had to be committed by the city. That was a requirement of the state grant. So, that, and I don't think...
And it had to be backed by a resolution.
It's not the mayor's decision to decide whether the state has already financially backed a project or not. So, it would have been nice for us to have seen that letter before it went out, but we saw it afterwards. We had to actually ask for it after it went out and after we were told the state approved it.
My concern is, I'm not so sure, I mean, I'm afraid, I'm not so sure the council would have approved it. We haven't discussed it, so I'm not sure the council would approve that specific project. I mean, from what I've heard about it, kind of through the grapevine, I wouldn't support it. And my name's on the letter, so...
Actually, your name isn't on the letter.
Well, council or the...
No, it just said the mayor.
But the, the application requires a resolution. In a resolution, the mayor does not have the ability to pass a resolution.
The mayor has ability to reflect on what had previously happened. We previously have supported an application from that Bremer Court effort from Rich Dane and Tom Sather, and it's, it's passed. It's on record. I'm reflecting that, plus my own feelings on the importance of affordable housing.
The resolution that you sent...
These are your own feelings, not, not those of the council, correct?
Say it again, Dan.
Your feelings on affordable housing are your own, not those of this council, correct?
Correct. Me as mayor.
And the resolution that you sent...
I'm called, I'm called to lead, and I'm leading as best I can.
Passed.
Because that's the issue for me, is affordable housing is hugely difficult to do, and we have an opportunity, and I have a support of it, and I have had a long support of it, and I'm very clear about it.
Right. But I'm just saying, the resolution that you put in that letter that you said council supported, four of the eight people involved with that, including yourself, are no, were not on the council at that time. You were not mayor at that time.
I'm just reflecting what, what had, what had happened, and we've supported Bremer Court in the past.
It was a very misleading letter.
I don't think so.
To say that, because you were not even mayor when that resolution passed.
No, I don't think it's misleading at all. We'd have to disagree.
We define what the purpose of council is, Ben?
We can...
If we're not included in decisions?
Then we'll define what the purpose of a mayor is.
Evidently, you can take stuff that only half the people were around for three years ago and send it out.
Well, mayors communicate. Mayors communicate. I'm sorry, mayors communicate. I'm not doing council action. I've given mayor all reflection on what we have done in the past and where I see the issue moving forward.
I mean, it's a democratic process. I think we need to vote on anything.
Correct. We will, and I've never said we don't.
Now, we need to check forward and you communicate our feelings.
Dan, I've never said we don't. And I anticipated that, and that's a natural process.
The only way they got that grant was because that, that state project, that state...
State's past, past support.
No, it needed current council support with a current...
I didn't say it had current. I said it had passed.
That's what it needed to get application.
And it had past support, and it also has my support. And that's all I said. End of discussion. Consent calendar. We have 20 items on tonight's consent calendar. They are: three requests from WHKS, one for the Dry Run, two for the Dry Run, and one for the bridge inspection. We have design alliance bill to pay for public services. We have a Peterson Contractors bill to pay for the Parkway. We have Peterson Contractors to pay for the Dry Run. We have Boulder Contractor bill to pay for PED, for the PED ramp. We have Denver Underground and Grading for the Second Street Northwest Storm Sewer. We have Heartland Asphalt for the Second Avenue Southwest Reconstruction in Babcock Woods. We have Blacktop Services for the dog park. That's for the parking lot and also the city patching program. We have the Paul Miller Design bill to pay for the pond project at the golf course. We have Woodriff Construction bill to pay for the outdoor pool renovation. We have the wine permit need to pay for renewed purposes. We have a change of ownership for the Waverly Bowling Alley on Class C license. We have a Class C license to pay, or to grant for the bowling alley. We have a Class C liquor license. We have three from Jam Entertainment, ones for downtown, and two are for, two are for Workburg, and this is for the Mumford and Sons concert. We have cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine vapor permit for the Feigning Goat, and we have the April bills to pay for cash disbursement. Is there a motion?
Move consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Unanimously approved. Regular business item number one is a resolve to appoint Wells Fargo Bank as our bonding agent for the recently sold general obligation bonds. I think a motion would be in order.
I'll move Resolution 1579, appointing Wells Fargo Bank, National Association of Minneapolis, Minnesota, to serve as paying agent bond registrar and transfer agent, approving the payment agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, and council discussion. Public input before we vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have some public comment on the agenda?
There isn't on, on the consent unless they speak ahead of time to pull something out. It's just automatic?
I just had a question on why the visa documentation for the visa bill is not on
I'll make an exception for the question. You don't need to come to the mic. Would someone like to answer? Back?
I can send it to him tomorrow. It was probably just a mistake.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I think I miss, I overlooked that. My bad. Sorry.
There's no council discussion, no public input. Roll call vote.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resnickack?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Nyandorff?
Yes.
Resolution 15-79 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two involves approving a filing of the tax-exempt certificate for the same bonds. Formal motion would be in order.
I'll move that the form of tax-exempt certificate be placed on file and approved for the $8,245,000 general obligation bond series 2015B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, and council discussion. Public input before we vote. Roll call vote, please.
Nyandorff?
Yes.
Resnickack?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved. Regular business item number three involves the continuing disclosure certificate of the same bonds. A formal motion, please.
I'll move that the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved for $8,245,000 general obligation bond series 2015B.
Second.
Motion second, and council, council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resnickack?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Nyandorff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved, seven-nothing. Regular business item number four is a resolve to levy a tax to pay the same bonds. Formal motion?
Move Resolution 1580, resolution authorizing and providing the insurance, the issuance of $8.245 million general obligation bond series 2015B and levying a tax to pay said bonds.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
One question, just, why can't these four things, why, why can't these be grouped together? I mean, I, we've talked about this before. I mean...
I was going to ask the same question. We tried a resolution...
I mean, they all, they all go together. I mean...
I would love to, but in my bonding proceedings, I have to show how each and every single one of them are voted on.
Red tape, red tape for blaming the government. All right, all right, all right.
This won't be the last time you'll have to answer.
I thought I'd ask.
Public input. Roll call vote.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resnickack?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Nyandorff?
Yes.
Resolution 15-80 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is to rezon two parcels of land away from agricultural designation. One is two-plus acres and the other just under two acres. Both are south of the Parkway. For the public, this is the Eliason property, and it's just behind Miller Hardware. City administrator, any comments on this before we... Motion?
This is a rezoning for the middle parcel. Is that, are we doing first one? Yeah, no, the 1.7, 1.7 acres. That's the parcel just north of the, the shopping mall. And we are asking, we asked them to ask for a C2 designation on this one because if they use the S1 like the rest of the mall, they wouldn't have to provide their own parking. And we know that there's probably a parking issue in that mall at times. And so, we'd rather develop that north parcel with its own parking in order to contribute to the parking that would be in that whole mall area. So, that's why that's a C2 designation instead of just adding it to the rest of the mall.
Okay, thank you. Formal motion, please.
I'd like to offer something on this. You know, there's two, is this just for that one parcel on the corner, or is this for both?
It's just one parcel on the north side. We did not rezone, we're not rezoning the city property.
No, but there's a mention of 12.3 acres, A1 to R4. Is that included in this resolution?
That's the next one.
That's the next one. Well, it shows on here this. Okay.
Yeah, it shows on... They're in the same ordinance, just so we can codify at the same time.
I guess I'd like to see those in two separate ordinances. Is that possible?
I thought they were on two separate...
Yeah, it's 996 and 997. We're doing...
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Okay, all right.
They're, they're, both of those parcels are listed together under, under... They're, they're, both of those parcels are listed together under, under, uh, agenda item number five, ordinance 996.
Really, they are two separate issues, I think. It should be considered separately.
I'd agree with that.
And we'll go back to a first reading on June 1.
Fine.
That's fine, green. That's fine.
I'm sorry, I missed what your comment was.
We'll go back to first reading on June 1 of each one separate.
Can we just split them now and do a 996A and a 996B?
I think we could make an amendment to the agenda, can't we? Or not?
I think you can split them and do an A and B.
They're both listed on there.
Then set the, set the public hearing for them as A and B.
Still have first reading for A, which would be your A1 to R4, and B, which would be your A1 to C2, and then have public hearings on A and B next week with your second reading separately.
Can we, can we do that as a friendly amendment to the motion?
Well, you can motion however you.
We haven't motioned it yet, huh?
Right.
I would move to split the first reading of ordinance 996 into ordinance 996A, amending the zoning ordinance for Waverly, providing for rezoning, uh, what's that?
12.33.
Yeah, 12.33 is the whole. It's 1.75.
There's two. 12.33 is not the whole.
Eleven and a third is A.
Okay, 12.33. Okay, so A will be the rezoning from A1 to R4 of 12.33 acres on the south side of Cedar River Parkway, and the first reading of ordinance 996B, rezoning 1.75 acres from A1 to C2 on the south side of Cedar River Parkway, and setting June 1, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the time, date, time, and place for a public hearing for both, for separately, to be considered separately, 996A and 996B.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
Do you want any further background on the other parcel?
We're just gonna vote first to split them, and then we can talk about them. Right? Do we gotta vote first to split them?
Yes.
Okay, if we're gonna vote to split right away, I'd ask, this has been motioned by, I thought we were dealing with you.
Oh, it wasn't.
This is, this is the motion. This is the motion. Splitting them with the motion, and then it's just setting the public hearing. So it's just.
Let's make two motions.
Two motions?
I think you did two motions, didn't you? I mean.
You made a motion to split them.
You made a motion. I can't remember.
And then you can make a motion on A, and then you can make a motion on B.
Motion.
We gotta vote to split them.
Make a motion to split ordinance 996 into 996A, providing for rezoning of 12.33 acres from A1 to R4 on the south side of Cedar River Parkway, and also split into ordinance 996B for the 1.75 acres from A1 to C2 on the south side of Cedar River Parkway.
Is there a second? It's been motioned seconded, split. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Okay, they're officially split. You've also put out the.
And I would motion to set June 1, 2015, 7:00 PM in the council chambers as the date, time, and place for a public hearing for ordinance 996A. This is the first motion.
Is there a second? Motion second, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Second.
That's gonna be a roll call for second.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, do you want to, do you want to discuss it first before we?
Does that take a roll call vote?
I didn't hear a second, did.
Do we want to discuss this before we vote on it?
First reading.
Okay, so this takes a roll call.
But we want, we want to discuss it first.
Correct.
Correct. Council discussion, go ahead.
The first one.
Council discussion, go ahead.
The first one is the larger parcel?
Yeah, R4, yeah.
Yes, yes.
The Eliason Farm is actually into three parcels. There's a parcel on the far east, which is about 14 acres, which was already zoned R4. And then there's the middle parcel, which is right behind the mall, which is the 12.33 acres we're talking about, which was zoned A1 agricultural. And then the, the remaining is the 1.75 acres on the north side of the mall. The rationale for changing the zoning to R4 is that everything that I believe is being, that is being planned for that area would be allowed within an R4 district. There isn't a set plan yet, and we've asked that be planned out in, in totality when it's done, and that it not be parceled off partially, you know, a spot here or a spot there. But the R4 would allow for single-family housing with a varying degree of, of lot size. So it could allow less than the 85 feet width that's required in an R1 zoning. It would be more like the Rolling Meadows subdivision, which, which has smaller lot sizes, which requires an R4 zoning. It would also include, it could include rental property, could be, include apartments, multifamily of various kinds. It could be similar to the elderly housing to the, to the south. It could be market rate apartments. It could be different things within that area. It, it's not clear what's gonna be planned for the whole area. That, that's still in the planning stage. But the current request is to zone it R4, which would probably encompass any kind of use that is expected at this point.
Thank you.
I guess my problem with the 12.3 acres, is that what we're talking about right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you know, since we don't have a plan, on admission, do we really wanna, do we really wanna sign that on our full designation? You know, later on in the agenda tonight, we have a discussion on an urban revitalization plan, which, you know, you're talking about multifamily housing. We're talking about residential housing. Do these all fit together? Is that what we really want to do with this property? We want to load ourselves into that frame of mind right away, or do we want to wait and see what that property's gonna be used for, and what this council decides that property should be used for along with the guidance of the zoning commission?
Well, I, I'll just respond, the way the P and Z considered this, that's a mixed-use area on the future land use plan. It was basically intended to be the use that is encompassed within R4. I think that's why that parcel in the east was actually zoned to be R4. The only reason the middle parcel probably wasn't done at the time is because they were still farming it, and they were still, they still had their home there, and their, their houses there. Mixed use, and, and I think what the Planning and Zoning Commission felt was mixed use means the type of uses that are included within an R4. I, I think it was the most logical zoning for what the future land use plan provided for. We don't normally have to see a build-out plan from somebody to, to rezone, when it's an area where it's consistent with the future land use plan. And so in this, at this point, we felt that that was an appropriate designation to be consistent with the larger parcel in the east.
One thing that I, when we talked about building Cedar River Parkway, and I actually advocated for delaying it a couple of years and doing the dry run out of Tiff, that whole conversation, but there was a lot on council that, discussion of commercial going in on the Cedar River Parkway. And so I'm kinda confused as to why we're taking such a large swath of that and making it R4, when a lot of the talk at the time was how much more commercial we would gain by adding that road in that area, and R4 isn't gonna allow for any kind of, you know, business parks, tech parks, those kind of things that a lot of council talked about at the time.
Well, the kinds of things that would be in a commercial zone wouldn't be as consistent with the, the residential uses which were, were looked at in this area. It doesn't mean that somebody wouldn't come forward with a plan at some point to maybe rezone the strip along the, the parkway, depending upon how they developed out the rest of the land. You know, we're, we're just not leaving at A1 at this point. The, the starting point is R4, and I think if they develop some land along there as, as far as commercial, that would be back before the P and Z and before this body to make that change. The R4, this, this is basically surrounded, except for the mall area, it's, it's surrounded by residential. I think the people on both sides are concerned that it would be residential, even if it's multifamily residential, as opposed to having commercial buildings or industrial parks or business parks or.
There was some discussion at P and Z about access off of Cedar River Parkway. I have to remember, right, there's just gonna be one drive access onto this lot, is that correct?
Well, what.
Based, based on DOT requirements?
Well, we want to have distance between the, the entryways onto the parkway, and so the, the, the design, the best design standards would, would, would require that we probably only have a maximum of three and maybe two. The first one would be the extension of First Street from north to south, and that's in that parcel to the east. The next one would be somewhere in the parcel we're talking about. The 12.33 acres would, would have an, a intersection with the parkway. Depending upon where they put that, if it's closer to the commercial lot, then we wouldn't allow another one on the commercial lot. But if it's farther away from that, then that would be considered. That commercial lot has some, some particular problems with that, because it has the parkways, the, the cement between the lanes.
The median.
I'm sorry, the median. The median extends halfway across that parcel, and so you can't really do a, a both-way in and out without taking it all the way to the east end of that parcel. When you put it to the east end of that parcel, it makes it pretty tight to get another road in before you get to First Street. Now, we're still considering this, depending upon the sight lines and things as you get there. I, I think it's a very good possibility we could have three entry points onto the parkway in that stretch, even if the one up on the north end, commercial would be a right-in, right-out. That's a possibility also. But it's, it's, at this point, I think it's waiting to see how it develops, because it depends upon what is developed on that road that would be exiting and entering onto that, onto the parkway. Because if it'd be commercial, it would be a lot more use, and we'd be more concerned with how it's located and how close it's located to the other streets.
I guess that's why, if we don't know what's going there, and we're waiting to see what goes there, why are we going ahead and zoning it now, when we could just wait and zone it when something comes along?
You know, and I think we, I think we give up a certain amount of control with that, of land use. If you allow it to an R4, and somebody purchases that property, I believe there was some communication about twelve complexes being built in that area. Is that, you know, do we want to leave it totally up to the developer or the purchase of that property to do with that property whatever he feels along that new? I'm sorry. Is that what we, is that really, really want to do as a council? So, you know, we could zone it as an R2, if that's what we would think, make it, you know, it's, it's residential. It's, it's what we want as far as land use to be residential, but at least we have control over that, or, you know, we can look back and say, all right, now we're ready to allow it to be R4, if that's what we want to do, rather than just, let's throw it out there, make it R4, and you can do whatever you want with it.
We're, we're doing this because the owners want it R4, right? I mean, this isn't, I mean, I, I guess if the owners of the property wanted a certain designation, and it fits, you know, I guess it fits with our land use, I, I don't know if we can tell them no, or we should tell them no, I guess.
Is it the owners of the property, or are they on a contract to buy?
Yeah, who's Dollstrom Real Estate Company?
It's a purchase, it's a company that is purchasing, has signed a purchase agreement with the, with the sellers, with the landowners, subject to the zoning request.
They're out of Cedar Falls, right?
But I thought, didn't we, weren't we just talking about, so, so I guess as we were talking, I went back to the minutes, and I've got the minutes, but we were talking about there's no plans. But I'm seeing in the minutes, Dollstrom Real Estate Company is requesting the rezoning.
Correct.
So there is a plan.
There is not a plan. There's a purchaser. There's somebody who's purchasing the land for development.
And if they're purchasing, requiring an R4, they have a plan.
So he's changing it from A1 to R4. He's obviously not gonna raise corn.
Correct. He's developing the property.
He may have ideas, but.
I do.
We haven't received a plat or anything like that yet.
Within the R4, within the R4 designation, there are.
He has a purpose, yeah. I'm a little bit concerned, and we've kind of brought this up before, that, again, there's only five members present at the planning and zoning meeting this time. And, I, I wish we had a little more consistency in the, in the, in the group there as they're doing the planning, but.
I think, I'll just mention this too, but I, so the planning and zoning hearing was on May 7, and it was a five yes vote. But there were commissioners at that meeting that their term had expired. So I don't know if their vote actually counts. So I don't really know if this passed planning and zoning legally, because their commission dates had expired.
I believe they continue until their successor is appointed.
Even if they expire May 1?
I, I believe they continue to, to, to serve until their, until their replacement is, is, is chosen.
It's not a binding vote, and their opinion is no less, no less than whether they're expired or not, their opinion is just as valid. I mean, that, that doesn't, that doesn't matter to me at all.
This seems a little weird, but, that we allow people to vote who terms have expired, but.
It's probably pretty common.
So I would say we shouldn't, you're agreeing that we shouldn't take the recommendation.
I think recommendation matters. It's not a binding recommendation.
It's advisory.
It's, I mean, we have some people, yeah, we have some people buying land that want to develop it. I don't know why. We wouldn't let them develop it.
Why do we even have a planning and zoning commission?
I guess, I don't know what their use.
Well, because they do, I think they do the, the deliberation, they do the study, they come to us with a recommendation.
And we're forced to use the recommendation, right?
Right. That's what Chris is saying.
But if three or four of the people had their terms expired?
It doesn't matter.
I don't know the legalities of that. I guess I'm taking Bill's word as, as city attorney.
It seems pretty pointless.
And another, another thing I'd like to know is.
Let's try to wrap up here. Dan, go ahead.
Another thing I'd like to know is, okay, these developers, you said Doll, is that?
Dollstrom.
Dollstrom? Are they going to be before this council next month, asking for a city match on a, on a grant with the state?
They won't need to.
Will they, though?
Does it matter?
I don't know that they, they have, I've not heard any interest in that workforce tax credit project or grant program from this developer.
If they do, we just take it on their merits.
We would just take it and, and put it before the P and Z to, or the Economic Development Commission to consider it, and put it forward to the.
I would say the big thing that concerns me, knowing Dollstrom and Cedar Falls and what they build, and them asking to go to R4, is they're most likely going to build a high-rise apartment complex similar to Cedar Falls. So otherwise, they wouldn't be asking for R4. They'd be asking for R2 to build duplexes or homes or, so I'm concerned that we're jumping straight to R4, and then now that owner has right to go ahead and build an eight, you know, five-story apartment building there, and we don't have any say in it anymore, because we just rezoned the land.
Correct.
Okay, one last comment before we, David, go ahead.
I would, I would, but I think we can continue to, but, but the only, I guess, the, my, my concern is if somebody's buying land, and they want to change the zoning, I think it's up to us to decide if that's proper, if, if there's a plan that the city would agree to. But I know, Chris, maybe, maybe I misunderstood it, but I think you said that if someone owns it, they can rezone it?
No, if someone owns it, they, I mean, and they want to rezon it in a way that fits the, the plan, I mean, they would come back with their design that we would, they would approve.
The subdivision plat would have to come before the P and Z to be considered.
Yeah, and then it comes, comes to us after that. I mean, so we're not, we're, we're not giving them carte blanche to do whatever they want. We're.
So if you zone to R4, though, you can't go, I mean, we can't turn around and say, you can't build it there.
Well, the, the city itself zoned the 14-acre parcel by the soccer complex, R4. That, that was, that was done. It's already R4. The 14 acres.
Many requests come to planning and zoning because a, a purchaser is interested in, in doing something. I mean, that's just the nature of it. And I think planning and zoning has a responsibility then to, you know, deal with that fairly, and, and deal with it within the context of the comprehensive land use plan. I, I, I don't think it's a place that, you know, tries, in my experience, it tries to manipulate anything, nor should we. I think we have to take each proposal on its, you know, on its face value. It's my opinion.
Hey, I think we're, A, you want a last comment?
That's exactly what I'm doing, because I, if we zone this R4, there's gonna be apartment buildings there, so that's.
Good. Great. More people in town.
Yeah, we need to grow. So this is on A of 996?
This is 6, 996A, yes.
It was your residential neighborhood. You just moved out of one.
So let's do a roll call vote.
Resnitchek?
No.
Lampy?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Gade?
No.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Nyandorff?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
So a 4-3 vote. We passed the first reading on A. We move to B. Do you want to state it?
Pro temp. I will move, setting June 1, 2015, 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 996B for rezoning 1.75 acres from A1 to C2 on the south side of Cedar River Parkway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
Do you want to talk about this one again?
Well, yeah, the, the commercial parcel again said that we, we recommended that they ask for a C2 rather than an S1. The logical thing would have been a continuation of the mall area. But again, since there's not common ownership, that wouldn't work. And we want them to provide their own parking on that parcel depending upon what's developed. It may be that they reach an agreement with the owners of the mall and have connections and everything is one big retail area. But we wanted to make sure that they would still add to the parking in that mall area because we know on the north end it can get pretty tight.
Other comments? Public input, and I was going to ask for public input, so that's not a line.
I was anticipating that.
You're exactly anticipatorily right, go ahead.
So, the 1.75 acres on the surface, that looks like a spot zone. And I have personal experience with spot zoning of property. And you can take it to Supreme Court and you will lose. Also, that 1.75 acres does not have a defined access. You're going to be running the access either through an R4, a commercially zoned venture through an R4 for an entrance. Because that's the only way you can get a right, right in and left out. And the, the next issue is the development company does not own the old Walmart property or the Miller Hardware property. That's a separate piece of land owned by the Miller family. So, and I, I think the zoning is S1, but it's not owned by Nautilus. There was quite a, quite a dispute that happened before McDonald's could purchase that land on the corner. So, then you look at, you got a private property owner on the, on the south side that does not have to give access to whoever owns the commercial property in that little notch. So, you got a couple of questions that probably should be answered about the legality of rezoning that, a spot, just a little 1.75 acre spot, a different zoning than anything that's around it. The state likes to see adjoining zoning coming into new properties. And the next thing is the access. And whether or not that'll be, be something that's negotiated between the Miller Hardware people and the purchaser of that land. Otherwise, they really don't have an access to that land. That land's got a kind of a big swale where there's a drainage area that will be going underneath of the Cedar River Parkway. In the past, we've said that developments that were an acre or bigger had to have their own water retention area on there. The water retention would be in the only spot that they could get for access to this piece of ground. There's quite a bit of problems that need to be looked at.
Well, thank you for that, I think that'll have to come up under public hearing as well, if we can chalk some of that up. Roll call vote, please.
Resnick.
No.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Lampy?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Gade?
No.
Nyandor?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Okay, B of 996 ordinance, first reading is passed by 4 to 3 vote. Regular business item number six is to amend the use of the four downtown parking lots to allow 24-hour parking, new upper-story resident parking, and duos area parking restrictions. Any lead-in comments, city administrator?
Just to follow up on our study session discussion a while back, a couple of weeks ago on parking. Again, this opens up the four city-owned downtown lots for 24-hour overnight parking and also restricts parking across from the alley south of duos and adjacent to the entrance to that same alley.
We picked that up after, motion please?
I'll move first reading ordinance 997, an ordinance amendment for 24-hour parking restriction and designated overnight spaces to be applied to all City of Waverly downtown parking lots and to prohibit parking in identified areas along East Street Southwest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion. Seems to have been around, doesn't it? Thank you for our past discussions, they were all very helpful. Public input before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Resnick.
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
Nyandor?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Ordinance first reading, 997 unanimously approved, regular business item.
Set a public hearing with that?
No.
On this ordinance?
No, rezoned.
So, this goes in effect.
We still have to.
Pass it two more times.
We still have to do two more readings, but it's only public hearing.
Yeah.
Rezoning, gotcha.
Regular business item number seven is to resolve, is a resolve emanating from councilperson Resnick regarding agenda publication deadlines? I'd like to move directly to a motion, would you be willing, councilman, to make the motion?
Yes, I move resolution 1581, setting policy regarding agenda publication and distribution timelines per section 10.6 of the City of Waverly Municipal Code.
Motion in seconded, council discussion.
The public first or council first?
No, I'd do council discussion first and then public input.
Okay.
Okay. So, we do it? We are on to council discussion.
I, I can start it perhaps. I, I, you know, I think it, I think in a way I worry about it being on Monday, tying and being a little bit too restrictive in terms of having it that early and having all of the materials by that time. And from Carla's explanations of what would have to happen for not uncommon circumstances, then we would actually be creating more rigmarole for ourselves rather than streamlining this. And so, while I don't have a problem at all with asking staff to get us things earlier, I, I, I worry a little bit about this tying our hands, I guess.
I guess the, the reason, maybe to answer the reason, I wanted to keep it simple, so just made Monday. As Bill pointed out at the last meeting, that by state law, where the provision is there for exceptional circumstances. And so, this keeps it simple and, and, you know, we talked about maybe Tuesday or so forth, that's just a day, which I would have a hard time thinking that a day would have an impact. So, this just made it cleaner, provided the opportunity to be in the paper if it was possible. So, it, it's, it's very simple, very clean, and allows it to be in the paper if that's possible. So, I guess that's, that was the reason. And I, and I don't, I guess I, the goal would not be to add additional work on staff. Rather, obviously, if something comes in on Wednesday, it goes on the following, following meetings, so it's as simple as that. As far as bonds and so forth, I think we can plan far enough ahead for those activities. Maybe, maybe we can develop a process where we're more disciplined. You know, if we're, if we've got a major project, we know when those dates are and we can move backwards. You know, maybe we have to be more disciplined in, in having meetings or attacking some of those items earlier so we're not putting the staff in a crunch at the last minute, so.
You know, you made the comment that it was restrictive, I guess who's, it's restrictive to the city staff, I guess. It's beneficial to the, our constituents. It's beneficial to all of us on council to be able to be more informed, make better decisions, research, get the opinions and the views of our constituents. Adds more for transparency. You know, I guess help me understand how this is restrictive, how is this a bad thing? I don't see anything with this being a bad thing. You know, we have an opportunity right now with no study session this month. We could, Carla could get to start working on our June 1st agenda. Doesn't have to worry about a study session, we have an opportunity here this month, it's just fairly unique. I, I guess I just, voting against this to me seems, why would you do that? I guess, why would, why is this a bad thing? I don't see it. I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it clutters anything other than the transition will be tough, granted. You know, I think Phil and I have had discussions before, you know, he just wants guidance, what do you want us to do? You know, it's, it's no different than expecting someone to be to work at 7 o'clock every morning, you know, make it happen. If there's problems, then we'll talk about it. But, you know, I think he's fairly clear as far as his, his resolution and I think it's a, I think it's worded fairly well and I'm definitely for it.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
To answer the question, what, what's a negative to this? I guess, having worked with the city on different projects and things like this, we are forcing, a contractor can only bill us for work done. So, now, we're adding at least a week and sometimes could add three weeks to their pay cycle. So, they're, they have money issues, they have to account for the float in, in their dollars from the time that they get the work done and can bill for it until we can cut them a check. So, one of the negatives to this is it's going to drive up costs to anybody that's going to bid on projects here. They're going to have to account for that lag in payment somehow. And I just, that's just one example where I think it's going to end up costing the city hard dollars, not inconvenience, not communication or whatever, it's going to affect the contracts that we let.
So, if you remember, I called the two most common contractors, they said it would not impact them whatsoever. They, we bill monthly, they send in the paperwork, we've got three meetings a month, doesn't impact them whatsoever.
Straight from the contractor.
I don't know how it can't.
Because they only bill once a month.
So, let's not, let's not question that. Go ahead and call. You know, they're, they're, they're in the business to manage their money and they had no issue with it.
They know they have to get it in two days earlier, they will, if they want their money.
So, if we have something on the agenda and my plans are specs or something and something changes on a Wednesday, it's all, we got this number wrong or something, do we just tell them, sorry, we can't, we can't update our information, the deadline was Monday?
For what?
Anything, I mean, anything that comes in after we've set, after we've, you know, here we go, the agenda's done on Monday, which is okay, I have no problem with that. But all the data, we can't accept any more data from anybody after Monday. So, Tuesday rolls around, oh, we forgot to put this in there, this, we need to change this. Do we pull that item? We're not allowed to accept any more information after Monday at noon?
But today, we've got a deadline and we don't want to get sloppy, there's no reason that we can't have things done. And if, if it has to go to the next week, we have three waiting, three meetings a month.
Two business meetings.
We have three opportunities, we've passed things at the third meeting. So, and then, and by state law, there is an opportunity for exceptions if it would actually harm someone for whatever reason. We've got that option, I just, we need to draw a line in the sand. So, we have it so we can expect it, so the paper can get it, so people can get into a cadence of knowing it. I mean, we're finding, you know, I'm finding, you know, to give Mr. Little credit, I'm finding that he's, he's digging information out better than I am. And because, but, and I'm, I'm finding that people are, people are hungry for information. And I think anything that we do to improve that would help.
We already, I would say we already do turn people away from getting on the agenda if they come in too late. So, this is just going to push it back.
No, I'm talking about someone that's already on the agenda.
We, we have a 10 or 14-day kind of thing, they have to have it in 10 days in advance. So, to get a liquor or tobacco license, that's 10 days in advance.
Wes, I will say though that the state requires, they require us to send out a 60-day in advance letter to them.
But they still get it in 10 days in advance, so it'll always make our next meeting because that.
I would, I would think in that instance, if they do not have the foresight to renew their liquor license and get it to council in a timely fashion, you're really wondering how bad they want a liquor license, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think we're talking about one or two or three days, I, personally, I don't understand it.
My, my concern isn't the, isn't the Monday, my concern would, and I've expressed it, well, the first concern was, has been addressed by making a resolution, not making a city code, which was my biggest problem. The other, the only other one is in the third, whereas, and you and I talked about this today, or fourth, whereas, make sure I got this scrolled down right, the, just the timing of the supporting documents being posted at the same time. And I think that's what Chris's point was getting at. If there's additional supporting documents that come in, for example, the bond, the actual bond letting doesn't happen until a Monday or, or a bid opening doesn't happen until Thursday. I don't see any problem with putting it on the agenda on Monday and saying to the public and saying to us, we're going to, we're going to look at what the bid is on Monday. We don't know what the actual final bid is, which one we're going to accept because it's not coming in until Wednesday or Thursday, but we're going to accept a bid on Monday. There's nothing wrong with that, there's no surprises coming in with that unless the bid comes in over what we had anticipated and which case, then it usually is a recommendation to reject. But we still have to have that on the agenda so that we can reject it. Otherwise, we're waiting two weeks to reject or resend it out or anything like that. So, that, that's where, to me, the timing, I don't have any problem with having it on Monday. I think, you know, even, even if we do two business meetings a month and we've got the third, third meeting is the, is the study session, the third meeting study session is a pretty generic agenda. It's a pretty cut and dried, these are the three, four topics that we're going to talk about. You know, hopefully, we're not dealing with more topics on a study session. But, so, we're really dealing with two Mondays, two weeks, occasionally a third week separating those Mondays, but you're dealing a week ahead of time. I don't, that, that I don't think is an issue with it. To me, it's the, it's the supporting documents giving a little bit of more leeway on the getting the supporting documents in.
To me, and I guess to me, the agenda is, has no value without the supporting documents. If you read through the agenda, we've got a zoning ordinance change, what if we didn't see that? I mean, that's, it's worthless to see that we're going to do a zoning ordinance change. The next one is, is another zoning or on the parking, if you couldn't see the information. There's one on the urban revitalization plan, what if you couldn't see that? The budget discussion that we had tonight, what if you couldn't see that? To me, the, the agenda has no value without the actual information.
And I would agree, we need, we need that information, but we're, you know, what's the difference with getting that information? You know, if we don't have, basically, we're saying if we don't have that on Monday, we don't get it at all. And so, we have to wait now two weeks, three weeks to, to have it.
Not two weeks or three weeks.
My, my.
Two weeks or three weeks.
If it's not there on Monday, it's not there, we have to take it off the agenda and it has to go to the next council meeting, so you're two, three weeks ahead.
And why is that a bad thing? It gives us more time to make educated, rational decisions based on facts and information. Not, okay, we got to do this because it's on the agenda. We need to deliberate, we need to make decisions based on the, the right, you know, and, and the opinions of the public.
I feel we have enough.
If the public does not have the opportunity to weigh in on it, how can we possibly act on it?
Council has been operating with getting this information on Thursday. I've already said I would like it earlier, at least knowing what's on the agenda. You know, most of these things that are coming up are not brand spanking new that we've never seen before or heard before. These are things that are on planning and zoning agenda, they're on the airport commission agendas, they're on.
There are three readings here.
They're, they're on.
Study sessions.
Study sessions, they're on, you know, strategic planning, they're on budget hearings, you know. These are all things that we've had our fingers on before, very rarely are they brand-new, completely new documents. So, we're seeing, okay, there's going to be a discussion on urban revitalization. We've talked about some of this already, we've already had some of these discussions. So, now we're having a, a further discussion, a little bit more looking at a proposed document. Now, I definitely want that document before Monday and right now, we're sitting at Thursday. I would say even, you know, Wednesday, Tuesday, but I don't want to tie city staff's hands in saying, if you don't have it a week ahead of time, we don't want it. That, and that's essentially what we're, what, what we're saying with this is that if we don't have it a week ahead of time, you might as well hold off for, you know, a week, two weeks.
You have to set a time somewhere, because you just said Tuesday is okay.
What, what I was.
Monday's not.
I would say, I would say as early as possible, that, that would be the timeline.
But then, so like today on, on our agenda. But then, so like, today on, on our agenda-
If they've got it on Monday, great.
All week, we had mayor appointments. Well, we didn't get the mayoral appointments till noon today. That wasn't even 24 hours' notice. What if someone had a problem with, what if the, what if the public wanted to know who the mayor was appointing to the commissions? They did, they did, they have no idea until he reads them tonight, 'cause we didn't get him at noon today.
Which is the lifelong policy of the Waverly.
That is not a lifelong policy of Waverly.
Let me, let me, let me make a comment. Remember my, my compromise? Remember my compromise? I was saying that if we give on Monday to the newspaper the proposed agenda with all the supporting documents that we have, then on Wednesday, we come back with the finalized version, which will be published then in the Thursday paper. We've covered every base, there's no problem, and we move forward.
I think this is probably where Anilia can kind of fill in a little something.
I'd like to make a comment for-
Yeah, I would too, for that.
I've tried to get in a couple of times.
Yeah, let, you wait one second, go ahead, Ed.
Um, I just wanna say that I, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I, I have enough time, I feel, to review the materials we have, the way we've been getting them. Occasionally, yes, there are things that I, you know, may be calling staff on Monday, and I wish it would've been the week before, but that's fairly unusual. Um, I feel, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's broken right now. Can it be improved upon? Yes. My position is that we've spent way too much time on this. I think there are far more important issues for us to be dealing with, um, at city council, and I think we should just vote on this. We've got a resolution before us, let's, uh, let's listen to what Anilia has to say, and let's vote.
Yeah.
And then let's get on to the real issues of the city.
Okay. Anilia?
This is proxy to the real issues of the city, 'cause if you don't get information-
Just a minute, Wes, that's a side comment. Anilia?
Well, I, I'm here to answer questions, if you have, regarding the agenda itself, or how it gets in the paper, or, or what's a good time for it to be delivered to the paper?
Yeah, that would be-
How can, how can I serve the public? My, my, my main concern as the editor is, how can I serve the public?
I guess, uh, you and I, you and I had exchanged email on that, so I just wanna sum up kinda what you and I talked about. Right now, we submit it as a public service announcement, and that's first come, first served, basically.
Yes.
So if we would submit that to you on a Friday afternoon, chances are, it may make the paper on Tuesday?
Yes. Chances are, right.
You know, if the deadline was Friday, or, sorry, Monday at noon, or later, we probably would be, you probably, you would recommend we would purchase space, so it's blocked off for us already.
Yeah. Well, i- if you purchase space like any other advertiser would, then you're guaranteeing the publication, just like any, any other advertiser buying the space and reserving the space for their message, whatever that message may be. If it's not, if it's a, a public service announcement, and believe me, as, as the editor, I feel very strongly that there is quite a bit of newsworthiness to the agenda. Um, but, but, but sometimes other pressing news comes in, and, and we run out of space, and I have had, much to my chagrin, I've had to take it off the page.
Would, um, if it made the paper on Tuesday, do you try to put it on Thursday, or you just, that's one time and that's it? What do you usually do?
I, I try my best. I try my best as much as I can to ensure its publication, because of my beliefs that it serves the public interest.
And if you got it Monday, that would give you two opportunities to get it in the paper?
That would, yes. And if it fell off the page for a pressing news story, or, or some, something else was pushing it. For example, a late obituary. Obituaries come in all the time, and, and, and they, they are paid publication pieces, and so, so it pushes stuff off the page. But if I did get it on Monday, yes, to answer your question, I would be able to have two opportunities. One for the next day's paper, and then a second time for Thursday's paper. Yes.
That would be a good reason to have it out on Monday, is that it would have two chances to make the paper, two chances for the public to see it ahead of time.
That would be the case, yes.
And allow me to ask a bit of a rhetorical question. Given the current timeline of having the agenda out on Thursday afternoon, what's its chances of making it in any issue prior to the meeting?
I'm sorry, I did not understand the question.
If the agenda, as it is, comes out on Thursday afternoon, what's its chances of making it into the paper prior to the meeting?
It comes out on Wednesday.
The following, the following Tuesday it would be, because we passed my deadline, right?
It was already out on Thursday. The agenda comes out on, on Wednesday, yeah. I think that's what you're asking, if it, if we, what we do right now, the agenda comes out on Wednesday.
The agenda comes out on Thursday, what's the chances of making the paper before the meeting on Monday, if it is not?
Zero. Zero.
So as far as process being broken, I'd say it's very broken, as far as informing the public.
My, my question would be, as far as, um, with the supporting documents, if we sent you the link with all the supporting documents, what are the odds of these supporting documents getting published?
It wouldn't.
They are very, but, as, as you, as I'm sure you know, they're voluminous, they are huge, and, and it would be unreasonable to ask for the printed publication to be published. That said, though, I would be more than willing to put them on the website of the paper, and so the people can look at them.
Hundred-page newspaper.
Well, but again, that's, that's kinda my point, is the supporting documents aren't necessarily necessary to inform the public of what we're talking about.
It would be if you referenced the supporting documents in the paper, and people that saw that agenda could be directed towards the, the websites, where they could look at that.
And they can go on the city website now and get-
But, you know, some people-
And I guess, you know, part of this too, when I, when I first came on, I first came on council, actually before I came on council, we had a strategic planning meeting, and I was invited because I was running, and a lot of the discussion where people were concerned about council, that they wouldn't have time to run, or they wouldn't have time to commit to it. Um, you know, so, unselfishly, I'm trying to help that as well. So if you think of the, the day in the life of a council person, they get the agenda sometime on Thursday, uh, you know, you know, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be reading your email at work, or maybe you don't have access to email at work. So Thursday, so you've got Thursday night, Friday you go back to work, and then you can spend the weekend on it. You know, so that's the only time you've got to actually do your job as a, as a council person. So if you get it on Monday, you can basically balance your work all week long and, and take the needed time. You know, you'd be amazed, the amount of emails, I'm getting emails right now, actually. I get flooded with emails on Monday. I don't have time to respond. You know, that, that's just irresponsible to me. Um, you know, there was, Carla sent out a survey today that, from Iowa State University, and one of the, one of the things I caught in there, um, and I couldn't find in the report, but one of the things I caught in there was the people of Waverly, only forty-nine percent of the people of Waverly trust city government. So to me, that is concerning. So, we have to do every possible thing that we can think of, that we can dream of, so we can get the information out earlier, so we can move the needle on that trust. And to me, if, if we're saying, nah, we don't need it, I don't have to look at it, you know, it's not a big deal, but, to me, we have to do everything possible to move the needle, so people trust city government.
From my perspective, as, as a, someone who works with news, the more information, the more timely the information, the more consistent the information flow, the better off we are. On our part in the paper, when we see the agenda ahead of time, we try to develop stories before the city council meeting comes, before, before it happens, so that to alert the, the, some of the public on important issues. But it's not always possible. We don't always get it, and it's fairly unpredictable, I would say.
It wasn't just, we had a citizen survey two years ago, that did a bunch of stuff for our town, but queried people on a lot of things, and wasn't the number one way that people get their information?
About the city of Waverly was the Waverly newspaper. Seventy percent of the people in that survey, that was sponsored by the city itself, answered that they get the information about city government from the paper.
So I think it's kinda vital that we give the paper the chance to get the agenda in the, in an issue.
I would, I mean, I think, you know, I think it ought, it, what, Anilia, what percentage of the time do you think that the agenda gets in the paper, or has historically?
Um, I would say, again, I have not done the, the full research, it would take quite, quite a lot of time to figure out, but just off the top of my head, I would just say about sixty percent. Is that fair, Carla?
Yeah, I mean-
Sixty percent, I would just say.
Last time I said fifty-fifty, so.
Yeah.
I'll give you ten.
And, and I agree completely with the comments that have been made about trying to continue to improve that. I don't know that this resolution is the way to do that, because I think there's some other things. I, I have to say, for those of you who met, read Carla's email, I think those are significant issues that are brought up. If something comes in that's fairly important, uh, bond-related things, for example, lots of money we're talking about. Um, so, yeah, we can get the information out as quickly as possible, but then if we're delayed to, and we could be delayed three weeks, because study sessions by code are not supposed to contain business, uh, uh, actions, I, I, you know, I just, I think then we're, we're getting the information out earlier, but we're delaying, uh, our, our action on important things potentially. And I just, I don't see why we need to do that if we make a commitment, and the staff makes a commitment to get us things earlier.
But, but the problem is, we haven't. We've been asking for this for a long time, and we haven't. So I have to actually pass an ordinance, so we do. We haven't gotten it earlier. Um, at work, if someone asks me, hey, why don't you get that done earlier? I would do it, and it hasn't happened. So we're passing an ordinance to get that done. Um, I guess I'm a little bit concerned that we're even having this type of discussion. There's, there's no reason that we all can't plan ahead, get all this information done. We're not gonna be doing this on Monday. This information could be compiled weeks before. Um, I'm, I'm really surprised that, I've been, I've been shocked how this has actually transpired. Um, emails have gone back and forth, the, the agenda fiasco that we all experienced earlier this week. I've, I've really been shocked on how this has transpired, on such a simple topic.
Yeah, please do.
Can I just ask you a question, Dan? Would this resolution also be required by council members, information that they support to staff, for an agenda?
Yeah, I would, I mean, there's, obviously, there'd be a, a very rigid deadline for us to get information to you. For example, when, you know, and, you know, um, the stuff that I submitted, if I don't make the deadline, um, that's, that's on me. And, and I would assume, that's, you know, you've got, you've got limitations within your own staff, that things that go on the agenda, I'm sure you've got deadlines where it has to be getting, has to be done and so forth. Yeah, that's part of it. Just like Anilia has deadlines, I'm sure all of her people have deadlines. You know, you've gotta get your stuff in, or else. It's not unusual, and, you know, this, this isn't, uh, this isn't anything new.
We get penalized for every hour we are late at the paper, so we are very motivated to meet the deadline. A hundred dollars an hour is a lot of money to pay if you're late.
I just, I just wanted to say one thing before. Um, I've, I've kinda morphed on this over the time, you know, I, I'm to the point where I don't even think a resolution is necessary. Um, you know, right now, you know, we kinda have, I don't know if it's, you know, the, you guys have a deadline right now? I don't know, is it?
We, we try to get the agenda preview out Monday, and then, um, the whole packet Thursday.
So like, what's your deadline for information to you?
Um, I get information into me Friday, basically ten days before the Monday, and then we go through it, edit, ask questions, and get it put together that Monday, Tuesday, and so we can do final prep Wednesday.
And, and like, where does that deadline come from? I just, something-
It's something we just worked backwards from to create, so we had enough time.
So, so what if we do exactly what we're doing now, we just move that up two days? You, you submit the agenda to the paper even on Friday, I don't, it can be Friday, Monday, I don't care. And instead, instead of you getting the packet done on Thursday, now the packet's ready on Tuesday, or Wednesday, or whatever. I mean, I, I, I just, this hard cutoff doesn't, just doesn't make, doesn't make sense to me. I'm not convinced that it is needed. Um, you know, there could be some little bits of information that come in on a Tuesday or Wednesday, you know, it's not an emergency that, oh, we, we can't do it because we don't got this little piece of information. Um, it, that's just kinda where I, where I'm heading. I mean, let's just move everything up two days.
And then-
Try that out, and if that doesn't work, I mean, you know, we, we don't have to submit on Friday, we can buy ad space. I, I don't care if, if we think it needs to be in the Monday and Tuesday, or the Tuesday and Thursday paper, if we wanna guarantee that. Um, right now, it's not guaranteed. Um, but, you know, just do what we do now and-
I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but, your, your comment earlier, I asked you, what are the chances of the agenda making it into the paper if it's submitted, or if it's finalized on Thursday? You said that there is no chance.
Well, because I, I have had my deadline publications have already passed, right?
Right, right, of course. Now, maybe I misunderstood, but Edie just asked you how often the agenda was published in the paper, and you said sixty percent.
Yeah.
Again, I apologize, putting you on the spot, but how is that possible?
It, it just depends on the workflow. Whenever they have submitted-
If the agenda comes in after-
It doesn't come out on Thursday, it comes out on Wednesday, or even now, it's been being the-
Well, the agenda is open-
Sometimes, you know, sometimes it comes on Wednesday, and I get a call from, from the city, and they say, this is really important, please find space, and I push something else off the page, and I make-
Again, I apologize, I didn't-
An honest effort.
Your idea is the, it's the whole informa, it's the, the stuff that we need that comes out Thursday.
Right. So, you send out, Phil, I think, are you copied on Phil's email on Monday?
I, I don't think so. I-
Usually it comes from Carla to the-
Unless I-
You should go from Carla or Val directly to the paper.
But Anilia's on that.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that email-
I don't know if I always put her on the preview, I think we can-
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think we're closing in on-
We've all agreed that we want it sooner than Thursday. Everyone has agreed that.
Yeah, I would say so.
Yeah.
Can we, so, can we at least do something?
Yeah. But let's handle this, we got a resolution, and then we can make a, a, a motion after that.
If this resolution doesn't pass, then nothing's gonna change. We're still gonna get it on Thursday.
Well, I think, I think Phil knows that we want it sooner.
Yeah, I think-
We've told, we've told him that for three years now.
Not, not as a council, not as a council, I mean, one person telling them.
Yeah.
The agenda preview does be, I don't even read the agenda preview, because there's nothing there. I mean, I, I can see that there's some bonds and stuff. I, I don't have time to read that.
Right, with agenda previews for the paper. And if you want it in the paper, that's gotta come out early.
We had to pick a day, and it was a logical day.
Yep. But the data is not required for the paper.
I think Wednesday is a big step forward.
I'd like to call the question.
One day?
Question has been-
Is a big step forward?
No, no, I, I'm gonna give, uh-
Go ahead, do it.
Wes, okay.
We're not getting anywhere.
Okay, roll call, vote, uh, city clerk.
Angus.
No.
Nyandorf.
No.
Gade.
Yes.
McKenzie.
No.
Lampy.
Yes.
Waldstein.
No.
Resniczek.
Yes.
Defeated, uh, four to three. Um, Protemp, do you want to suggest, uh, a motion, or you want to, uh?
Well, I think, I mean, we've, we've had the discussion on it, I think Phil-
We just voted on it, it's over.
Is, there, we've already-
That's true.
Voted on this resolution.
Wes is, Wes is right, Wes is right with it.
People shouldn't get information, let's move on. It's a lie.
Yeah, that's-
We've had councils state they don't read the information they get.
The editorial comments are not necessary. Regular business item number eight is-
Close the statement about not even reading the information they get, so.
Uh, regular business item number eight is a discussion and review of a proposed urban revitalization plan to provide incentives for multifamily renovation and development. I think we should lean on our economic development director for, uh, uh, some beginning of this discussion, unless the city administrator would like to, so.
He's more eloquent than I.
Go ahead.
Deep breath. Um, the memo before you, that you were able to read, talks about the reasons why I'm proposing this plan. Um, it is a, the type of plan that is used in a variety of ways around the state in order to encourage certain types of development. It is one example of the way this type of plan can be used. I, um, there, there are three different ways that I, I considered proposing this in front of this council, because I believe there are three different ways that we could do some incentives to allow for more development. Um, I'll, I'll go the other two that I'm not doing today, just so you understand. One of them would be a slum and blight, um, for the, um, the floodplain area that's going to be taken out from the dry run. I'm not saying that people's houses in those areas are slum and blight, but the fact that they were a hundred year floodplain for so long, um, might be enough to qualify that for that designation, which would allow for a lot more benefit to the people who would be in that re, in that area. That we're gonna do closer to the time that those houses will come out of the flood zone, um, and we can talk about it at that time. The other would be a commercial type of, um, plan that would be allowed to provide incentives for commercial development of, and it's used a lot of times with Main Street areas, um, uh, up and down the Main Street, where you can actually give incentives for development of, uh, your commercial buildings that, that need development along that area. The, the plan i- is under, uh, chapter 404. It also provides for the ability to give incentives for housing development. And this became relevant when we received a request for an incentive, um, and that, that made it, for me, to be relevant, to have the, the council consider this, this type of a type of a plan and to give incentives for those types of projects that it, it believes should be incented to, to encourage those developers to proceed with those kinds of plans. So what we've put together with the help, with some help from the attorneys in Des Moines, was a 404 plan that would be for multi-family units, multi-family residential. We have been told for quite some time that developers can't make it work in a town like Waverly and, and towns of our size because the cost doesn't allow them to charge high enough rents to, to recover the cost of, and, and to make it financially viable. And so other cities and other parts of the state are using this type of a plan in order to provide tax exemptions for developers of properties that you want to give incentives for. And this is used by, you designate the actual areas in which you would put into that plan. So you identify specific areas that you want to give incentives for and you identify those properties within the plan. And then when, when people do development within that plan area, they're entitled to the tax exemption that you put into the plan. As I said in the, in the summary, there are different ways to give incentives. You can do a 10-year plan and you can do a three-year total abatement for the, the property, or the value that's being created by the project. This can be used for new construction, it can be used for renovations and redevelopment. I'm proposing that we consider, that the city council consider this for the city in order to give some incentives, both for the development of new rental property, which hasn't, we haven't had a new structure since the seventies. We have had, in the last year, I've done visits with at least seven of the local employers and there was no local employer that had more than 40% of its employees living in the city of Waverly. And many expressing the concern that the reason that most of their employees live outside of Waverly is that there isn't enough housing for them. The city commissioned a study, which indicated the same thing, that there wasn't enough rental housing, there wasn't enough multifamily housing. And I have heard that from people ever since I moved to Waverly in 2009. And, and I'm not going to say that's scientific way, but when you hear it year after year, you have to believe that, that there's a lack of available rental housing for people that want to live in Waverly. So put that all together, I tried to come up with a plan that this body could consider and decide whether it wanted to provide some incentives for those property owners and developers that wanted to either renovate their properties, to make them more viable, or to build property, build rental property that is not available now in the city. So I gave you a copy of the chapter. I think I tried to provide as much background information as I could. And I can tell you that at least one developer has submitted an application for incentives that would be able to be funded by this urban revitalization plan as it, it was written. And I, I believe there may be more because once people understand that this is a, this would be a decent incentive for, for the construction of such property, that it would probably something that might stimulate some, some construction. It might stimulate some, the construction of some, we, we believe needed units within the city. And I guess I'd take questions or you can have discussion.
One of the initial questions, sorry to, I guess a little bit.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
I was trying to read through, where's the money come from?
The money comes from the taxes they pay on the improvement, so if.
So it's our, it's our money, it's not a state program?
It, it is not. It is not a state program. It, it, what happens is when you certify the improvements, when you certify what you've added to the tax rolls, the taxes that are incrementally relative to that improvement then becomes abatable. And we abate those taxes for the period of time and on the schedule that we put into the plan. So it's actually taxes that wouldn't be generated unless the plan was actually followed, I mean, if the project was not actually built. The fact that it generates its own taxes to then to re, to abate those taxes for, for a period of time.
They pay them, then we give them back?
In this situation, it would just be, they would essentially be waived for a period of time.
How is, how is this different than any other incentive that we've provided businesses in town and so forth?
It's, it's probably not any, it's not fundamentally different than an urban renewal plan that provides for TIF benefits to be, or TIF.
Tax rebates.
Tax rebates. Because the, only in that situation, you collect them and you pay them back. In this situation, they would be abated. So they, the, if you'd used a three-year total abatement, the developer would finish their project within the year, certify it by January 1st. And when the taxes start being collected from that in 18 months, it would be, they would have no taxes on the, on the taxes attributable to the improvements they made. So if it's an existing contract, an existing property that adds a half million dollars, the taxes on that half million dollars would also be abated. If it was a brand-new project, it would be based on the increase in value over the, the previous assessed value.
So I guess my concern then is how do you control, we don't really necessarily know for sure exactly how much the rebate or tax abatement in this case would be.
Right.
Because based on how much the improvement is on it. I'm not, you know, just my opinion, I kind of like the idea that we do with the rebate where we, we kind of set a, set an amount that we're willing to rebate back after they've paid. That's, that's just my preference. I kind of like the way we've been doing it that way, where.
Well, section, the section 404, I mean, this, this plan doesn't do that. So I, I'm kind of tied by what the, the Iowa code provides for this. And that's why you have a, you have a choice of whether to do three years total. You can do a five-year plan, you can do a 10-year plan. I think the most you can do is 10 years. It's just between the three-year and the 10-year. It, it generally gets you to the same place. Right now, what, what people are finding across the state when they use the multi-residential is that they're wanting to do the three-year total because the tax rates are going down for multi-residential properties until they equal residential tax rates in, in the future.
I guess, I had two questions and that was one of them. So due to the state tax cuts that were passed, what, three years ago? Multifamily used to be, have no rollback. So they had to pay 100% tax on their full valuation of their property. Right now, I think it's down in the 70% range, it's being stepped down, but like you said, within about three years, it'll be fully equal to our normal residential homes that all of us live in, so about 50%.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, right.
So that alone, to me, if someone owns a $2 million property, they're already going to be getting a 50% tax cut just from that. And if they come and build a two, or if, they come in and build a brand-new $4 million property, they're only going to pay half as many taxes on that as they would have just a couple of years ago. So isn't that already a huge incentive to build multifamily? So why are we adding on to that, I guess?
We kind of thought that was the case a couple of years ago when that first came out, but then when we heard from owners of large multifamily complexes, they said it really wasn't a big incentive and that it didn't amount to much in their tax bill. Because we kind of thought the same thing, but then we heard from property owners that it really, they were just saying at the time that it wasn't making an impact. So that's where we were looking at, well, what are the numbers? And, and how does the math work out? I don't know if we brought.
Has the tax, I mean, if you heard, I mean, that's only passed a couple of years ago, so I don't know if, are we giving it enough time for that full, to where multifamily is being taxed as a residential home, where you're only paying 50% of your value? Have we given that enough time to really take effect?
It hasn't rolled back to that point yet.
It's stepping back about 4% a year, what, 46% a year? So it's not that, it's not that dramatic.
But it will be.
You're throwing the, you're throwing the new development, the new construction in with the improvements, is that correct? Or is it two separate programs?
Nope, it's the same program.
So you're improving a Bavacon lot, you're still, you're, you're missing out on a tremendous amount of tax there.
Well, you're missing out, I mean, the, the city, we don't get the taxes for the first three years that they're abated, but we get the tax revenue from then on and we, and we have the, the, the development within the city to serve the city. And that's the benefit of it. That's a way of giving back taxes that doesn't have to be funded through the, the, the actual money that the city has from, it's just whatever they would get for that first three, they're just waiting for three years to collect taxes on that property.
Will this spur development, in your opinion?
Well, clearly it'll spur development. I mean, the, the issue of, if you give people a tax break or a tax abatement, that's going to maybe spur some people to move because it'll be cheaper for them to do so. Whether it does what we want it to do, whether it's enough to spur development of this type of property, I don't know. It may not be enough and it may be enough, I don't know. It, it's certainly a break, a tax abatement for that developer who takes advantage of it.
In the area, does this follow just the TIF district?
It does not follow the TIF district. In fact, that's another issue that would have to be discussed and determined because this body gets to set the area that is included within that plan.
That would be my other main concern is what areas do we include and what areas don't we include, because.
That's a different issue too. I mean, that's a.
I feel weird, I would feel, I would feel it's not fair to only incentivize places where new properties could go, where maybe we already have an apartment complex in town and maybe they want to tear it down and rebuild a new one.
Yeah, I agree.
I would feel everyone should have advantage of that and not just new areas.
Would this be part of that?
That would be the plan.
Are we going to annex the whole town into this then?
There are towns that do that, actually.
Some towns basically draw it to city limits, other towns pick, if there are older vintage apartments that are in need of rehab, they, they designate that area. And, and so it's a program, one of the reasons that many towns use this is it's a program that applies to new and existing. And it's all based on the value created by rehabilitation or construction.
And in fact.
And that's why I think council, I'm sorry, Bill. That's why I think council would want to look and, and work with probably economic development and planning and zoning to look at where are areas where we can see new multifamily and where are areas where we have multifamily that we'd like to see additional investment.
So this, I mean, obviously, everything we talk about is hypothetical with these kind of things, but, so we have multifamily taxes going down in general, which is, according to you guys, hasn't spurred any multifamily building, even though they're paying less taxes and will be paying less taxes going forward until 2020 when it hits residential. But then we're also talking about giving them, they don't have to pay any taxes at all for the first three years.
If that's, if that's a schedule council chooses, so there's different options, like there's a three-year 100% abatement, there's a five-year kind of.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy, yeah, exactly, or 10-year declining, or the council can.
My two questions are, is, as a city with our revenue that we need to bring in, are we going to feel the impact of just the state tax cuts? Because we have, let's say, 20% of our revenue already is multifamily, that's going to drop down from, we used to get 100% of that and now we're going to get 50% of that, then we throw this on top of it, is that going to hurt the money we bring in?
No, I don't, no. Let, let me rephrase that. I don't believe so because this is only net new increment. And so where we were, where we are working on our budget today is what exists today. So the rollback is on what's today. And I think the bigger concern is you have the rollback on what exists and you don't have new development. And so I think what Bill and the Economic Development Commission have been working on here is trying to find that sweet spot between not doing any harm to the patient and making it healthier and, and growing it, really. So the rollback that's already coming, that's going to happen. And what we're looking at here is what can we do to provide an incentive to grow additional taxpayers, essentially?
We have that rollback plus the commercial rollback, which right now we're getting backfill for, but probably not forever. So I mean, that's two.
Probably not.
That's two ways that our income as a city is going to go down.
Correct, which is why the, the philosophy of, of pretty much every local government unit across the state is figuring out how do we grow? How do we incent more developers to come here? How do we incent more investment into our existing stock to rehab it and improve it?
I understand that, but then the other question is, what happens if we go through with all these things and we kind of turn into Cedar Falls where we have this ginormous boom of huge apartment complexes being built all over and no one to rent them?
You know, we're looking at, we're looking at saturating the market with rental property here and I don't think that's a good idea for anyone. You know, we're spending way too much time, I think, focusing on individual investors where we should be looking at maybe some incentives for single-family and, you know, give some tax breaks to the family that wants to move to town and build a new home, rather than, you know, concentrate on the development, concentrate on the big investors that are not even necessarily within our community. You know, let's, let's try and attract new families, make it, you know, go, go ahead from that. I mean, has anybody looked at that? Have you, have you had that as an opportunity?
I just, I saw it in a seminar, it was that, two weeks ago, the city of Newton, their person came forward and talked about a program that Newton had. And they actually, you know, they, they lost Maytag, but they're actually back above their employment levels from when Maytag left. And, but they were still not building any houses. So they said, let's, let's see if we can give some incentives. So they voted, actually they bonded, I think, to create a fund to then give everybody a check for 10 grand who wanted to build a house. Then they got a bunch of people in town to give perks, like the True Value gave a lawnmower and the Race Track gave a free pass for the year and all these perks that they could give. They got one house built using that program. So, I mean, it didn't, doesn't always work now, I mean, because in certain situations, it isn't the desire to build, it might be the availability of land. For single-family housing around here, it's been the availability of subdivisions of land. We have upper level, we have, we have a lot of what I would call the higher-end lots, but we don't have a lot of the, the affordable lots that can, that can be built with family home, housing that, that they can afford, either a beginning home or a, or a move-up home.
I wonder, I guess I'm, maybe to piggyback on that a little bit, I, I guess as I, as I read through this, so I was, I was intrigued by this urban revitalization plan, so I looked up a few and found different cities. It seemed like they were specifically targeting maybe a poor area of town or they're trying to specifically revitalize something. I don't see Waverly as needing specifically to revitalize an area. I, I think we have an opportunity for housing, so I think it, what, what I would propose is more of a comprehensive plan on housing as a whole. I'm not so sure I would support providing incentives for apartments because it really, what that does is builds equity for the guy that owns the place. If you're, if you're providing incentives, and it, and I'm, I'm afraid the apartments, if you're giving incentives to an apartment complex, you're basically taking business away from other renter or other landlords in town, providing competition. But if we have a, more of a comprehensive housing plan, maybe building houses, some of those types of things, I think we would be building wealth with our people and not just individuals in town. Because I, you know, I can't help but to think, you know, last weekend we had a soccer game in Denver and, you know, you stand out there and, and there's a lot of beautiful neighborhoods there and I talked to a, a guy that I work with that's from there and he said, yeah, they have a, a super incentive, people are, are building houses like crazy.
But you know who owns that subdivision?
The people in the houses.
No, yeah, but Marv Schumacher lost a lot of money building that and doing that subdivision. And he will say, I did it for my town, but I certainly didn't do it to make any money on it. So the only reason that subdivision is being, that, that's working is because somebody was willing to step forward in the community and make that, and make that investment in his community. And I, I really, my hat's off to Marv for doing that.
Or, or why aren't we as a council willing to step forward and do the same thing as Marv did?
You mean, purchase land?
Well, create incentive.
Isn't that what this is doing?
This is for multifamily housing.
We're talking about, you know.
We're talking about making, for affordable, for people who can't afford the high-end house, isn't, is this a kind of the medium range or is this high?
This is a market rate, this is a market rate program. It, it doesn't have to be for.
No, no, I, I know it's market, but it, it, it isn't as expensive as.
But it can be used for townhouses, it can be used for, for fourplexes, eightplexes.
It, it'd be nice housing, but it, the, the complaint I hear all the time is, I want to live in Waverly, I just can, you know, they're coming, but they can't afford, so they go to some other surrounding town and that's okay, but we want to nab some here. We, we're just, we have, you know, 73% of the people who work here can't live here.
But I don't think the 73% picked outside of Waverly to live because they can't afford to be here. Many of them picked that because the type of housing they want is not available here. What we're, what we're hearing at Kuna and what we're hearing at other places is, we don't want to live there because you don't have apartment complexes that we want to live in. because you don't have apartment complexes that we want to live in. We don't have the amenities in those complexes that, that we're, we're getting and expecting in Cedar Falls or in some, in, in the urban area. We may not capture that. I mean, it's a, it's still a market-driven program. If we give a rebate incentive, they still have to come up with the rest of the money and they still have to make it work for, for 10, 20 years like everybody else.
Are we falsely driving a business case that may not work in 10, 12, 15 years?
It may not work, the only thing way it wouldn't work is if, once it's built, it's there. And that means that the market will take care of the market, what the rate they can charge.
Partially responsible for that being there. Is it made, is that built on a perception that the people that want to move to Waverly want to live in a, in a multifamily, in a, in a 20, 52-unit apartment building? Or do they want to live in a smaller type development, maybe duplexes, you know, fourplexes, whatever that may be? You know, who's done that research?
And that's why this is, this is three units and more. So this isn't necessarily high-rise, 52 units. It can be a triplex or a fourplex.
I think one thing that would, if we continue exploring something like this, I mean, there's, there's got to be a way to project, you know, if we, with the rollbacks that Wes was talking about, that our reality, we know what those are going to be. And with whatever, you know, various scenarios, let's say two or three scenarios of rebates at different percentages for a different period of years, what kind of growth would be necessary to sustain this, you know, the, the income that the city needs? I mean, I think, I think that kind of scenario building would be helpful to me at least.
I mean, even if we abate some of the taxes for some period of time like this plan does, we've added taxable value to the, to the community. I mean, we've already, it's already constructed. And so at some point, we're going to get the full amount of property taxes from that property and the people that would populate that, that apartment complex or that duplex, or I guess it isn't duplex in this situation, but fourplex. And what I'm hearing, I know people are scared of the, they've heard about the project that Mr. Dane and Mr. Sather have that is a larger type of structure and the ones I'm hearing are 12plexes and below. And, and that's, that's the ones that developers are telling us that they would like to try it in our community if they could afford to do that.
I think having those would be good. I mean, another concern would be we're having 20, 25 apartments come online downtown this year.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
This year. If the Dane-Sather project goes through, that's 54 new ones. So then we're going to have about 80 new apartments within a year's time, just like that.
Plus, I've heard that there's a vacancy right now in town of at least 30, I think. Or there was two weeks ago, there was 34 rent signs out in various places in town.
So yeah, so we'll have 72 new apartments if these things go through. Do we really need to add more incentive to build more apartments?
Or should, or should we let the market take care of it? I guess, I, I think we need to really tread very carefully on stimulating a market that has been taking care of itself so far. Just my thoughts, you know, and what else, what else are we going to do to the property values of the existing properties that are out there? Driven on a, on a income approach for property value, how is that going to affect, you know, the, the properties that are owned by other, by other investors? You know, if they're not, if you saturate the market, it's supply and demand. If you saturate the market, your property values will follow your rent, your rental prices. And if you're not able to rent your property, you're going to discount your rental price.
Dan, I want Dan first.
Hopefully the council will give me the same latitude that I've been listening to his comments and not interrupt. This was discussed at Economic Commission and a couple of things that came out of there, and Bill may have mentioned it already, but this is a program that the council can elect to stop at any time. So if we put it in place, we see what we feel is too high of a utilization, we can always pull it. It's, it can be stopped at any point. The, the commission liked it because it was targeted both for new and old. So there, again, we were just challenged earlier tonight to listen to the constituents. The constituents have consistently been telling us that we have a dated rental property in town. That's nobody's fault. I'm not calling anybody out, but study after study that we've had has said that it's dated. This gives those folks an opportunity to maybe update as well as new development to be built. Tim kind of alluded to the overbuilding process and it's been referenced here a couple of times. I think in some of the numbers we saw, this is very similar to other incentive packages we've done in that eight to 10% range when you start to do the math. I don't know that eight to 10% is going to be enough to cause a big overbuilding boom because they still have to get it financed, they still have to put their business plan together to go to their investors. And if their investors have some of the concerns that it's being expressed here, it won't be funded. So. And again, it wasn't, I'm not going to use 100%, but it was a very strong opinion of the Economic Development Commission of why you wouldn't do this. You start to put things on the book that will be that backfill in 2022 for the rollback. Yeah, you, you, you become a partner in developing the community and growing it for three years. You give them back their, part of their investment in the community for three years. Then after that, the city, all of a sudden, that comes on the tax roll. It replenishes, it backfills for what we're losing because of what they're doing at the state level. Why would you not want to do that? It's taking no tax dollars away from any other program. It's the developer that's being rewarded for developing. Could it be done on a single-family? We're being told no, that, that there just isn't enough margin there to do it. I don't know why twice tonight, when we start talking multifamily, there's such a pushback on it and why we're trying to focus on single-family. Study that we paid for as a council came back and said, we need multifamily rental units. We're not listening to the customers, the community that says we need it. We're not listening to the study we paid for that says we need it. We're trying to make up a reason to not support this.
Let's take a couple more comments. Wes?
Iowa Economic Development issued a study that said that there was no need for additional.
Yeah.
Wait one second, Wes, okay then.
Iowa Economic Development Commission issued a study that said there was no need for additional rental property. And then we, or the council prior, you know, got a second opinion for that, for lack of a better term.
I would encourage folks to go back and read that. They did not say there was not a need. They specifically said that they would not fund the project because of the pushback from the local community landlords. In that study, it says there is a need, but they chose not to fund it because of the pushback of the local landlords.
Two recent studies that we got that you actually wanted on the city website. One of them stated that Waverly was the number one town for families to move into. So if we're that popular of a town, that, great. And you wanted that out there and it was front page of the paper. Why do we need to incent people to build apartments here? Aren't people, isn't, aren't, if you build it, they will come, right? Because we're the number one town to move into.
I think that's a good question, Bill. Can you respond?
I just, we haven't had enough available. I mean, we, we are still hearing from people who want to be here and can't.
So is that study false, that we're not the number one town to move into? I mean, it's, because we put that on the front page of the Waverly paper.
That's a real lead, I mean, that's a.
You're twisting the story. It said we were the number one town to raise children.
Yeah, we were the number four, most affordable city in America. Was that?
That was another one, but.
More affordable suburb.
Those are our high points. I hope we're lifting that up. Pride, that was with pride, I'm sure.
One of the things I want to, want to say, though, is when I was on Economic Development Commission, I was really scraping to, to get the commission to talk about housing, so I congratulate them in doing that. You know, it's, it's good to see, you know, looking at my screen, urban revitalization plan. My, my only question, though, is I think it, I appreciate the work that's been done and I would prefer more study. And I'm a little bit nervous to incent housing that is considered, it doesn't have a strong enough business case on its own. So we have to give tax dollars to support it. That concerns me, especially since that will create, it'll create additional, basically, competition for existing owners. If you like us incenting, you know, I don't want to name a business, but pick a business downtown Main Street and we started incenting that type of business. That's kind of what I see here. But, so I think there's ways to help our housing. I think maybe a broader plan, but more of a focused plan on rental. I'm not sure that's the right thing to do.
I think maybe, can that be the last word, I think, David?
I don't want to be the last.
Mayor, I, I just, I mean, I guess we've talked about it and, and it's something I've heard since, what am I, before I ran and when I was running and since I've been on, is that there isn't the housing for people that are looking for the housing. And a huge part of that was in '08 and losing a lot of our single-family homes. And there's a lot of talk about, well, let the market fix itself. Well, what's happening with the market, at least from what I'm seeing and have been seeing, is the market's fixing itself by people buying up the single-family homes and dividing them up into apartments. And so we're losing both our single-family homes for new and young families that want to get started and don't have the money to build brand-new. And we're, we're basically building the, these, there's no incentive for the, the apartments to, multifamilies to improve themselves beyond, you know, what can, what can they match with an old house that's been divided into, into three or four parts to, to rent. So that's kind of that market. So why would the city want to do some sort of incentive? To me, that would be one sort of reason for doing it, to keep the single-family homes as single-families because once those neighborhoods become all rental units, we get, you know, there aren't any single-family homes for those, those younger families or the starter families to, to, to build in. And Wes has mentioned this certainly too, quite around his, his area.
They're all for rent. They're all, every single house has a for-rent sign.
Well, as, as the college kids are leaving.
There's five houses for rent on my street.
Yep.
So there's plenty of places to rent right now.
I don't know, the chamber is saying, the hospital is saying they getting people coming in all the time. That's what came into the commission. They just said, we just absolutely got to add more housing. They said the housing issue was the only issue.
If you want to rent a portion of a room in a house.
Yes, there's rooms to rent.
We need, we need a last word, I'm going to leave it.
One last thing I'd like to say is that on page two of this, and just this, we talked about this earlier. Page two of the first paragraph, it does say that this project, the Dane-Sather project, received an award from the Workhouse Housing Grant from the state of Iowa. And this program requires a local commitment of incentive from the city.
Correct. David, you want to, you want to?
Which is, I would say, illegal, but.
I think, I'm just, go ahead, David. We can go around and around. Even the Maxfield study, you know, I had some questions. I'm probably a little bit biased about, you know, they, they skipped those units that were less than eight units or something, you know, which I'm not sure there's many. You know, as I drive around, I'm not sure there's many apartments in town that are more than eight units. So my fear is they, they missed really Waverly's market in their survey. So I, like I said earlier, I applaud the Economic Development Commission worked on housing, but I think there's a whole lot of detail to make sure that we don't, I think some people have said that Cedar Falls are, have a little bit of a vacancy issue. I don't want to, I don't want to go down that same road. Hurt some of our landlords that, that use this as a, as basically their, their income. So.
Now you have clear marching orders, Bill.
I didn't get to say anything. I just want, just real quick.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, all this, you know, we got to, got to be a little, little careful with this, you know, I'm generally, generally seems like a good idea. But I'm going to echo what Dan said before, that I think we can't ignore single-family homes. I think, I, this is just my, just my feeling. I, I think we have a, we have a, we have a lot problem in town of smaller-sized lots that, you know, where I used to live behind the high school there. That was a perfect, you know, if you're going to build your first home, those are smaller lots. That thing has close to 90 houses in that little subdivision. I, I don't think we have a lot of that stuff. And, you know, I, I think another subdivision like that would fill up fast. So whether that's something we, we need to look at as a council or.
But that's, that's what the Elyson Farm, that, that R4 designation would allow that kind of development. Whereas our R1 would not allow that.
Right. Yeah, if, yeah, if that would happen, yeah.
Okay. Challenge, somebody could build a, you could build a house next door, they could build a apartment building.
How about, how about an R2 or an R3? Is it, is R4 the correct zoning for this? I mean, I think that deserves a little more discussion.
Well, and I, and I just mean that the R4 is what's been used to do the smaller lot sizes. And that's what is intended to be on First Street by the soccer complex, by the developer who's, who's looking at, who's wanting to buy this.
R4 is on one with zero lot lines, right? So you do duplexes right on the, on the lot line. I don't know if R3 allows that.
It's a variety of, it's a mixed housing. It, it allows a lot of things. But it allows those, those housing, housing units that are not, 85-foot width is a R1. We want less than 85-foot width. And that allows, R4 allows that to happen. So you'll get a better density, more affordable houses, and hopefully that'll happen.
So what's a lot width on R3?
I don't think there probably isn't one of that.
Russ, is there any last word from the guest councilperson on this wonderful discussion? Because it is a lively discussion and we want to all listen to each other. Everybody's got to listen to everybody on this one.
One thing we just did too, we talked about how bad we need apartments. We just tore down a, what, four, eight-plex apartment building right by Quickstar that maybe we could have saved if we would have designed the dry run a bit different. But that was rental housing that we lost.
Point taken. Regular business item number nine involves a yearly transfer of monies between funds. Let's go right to a motion.
Oh, motion to approve the partial list, 2014, 15 yearly transfers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Council discussion. Public input. All in favor signify with yes.
Wait, who's this? Still seeing, we transferred $20,000 to the Bridge Project Fund. Where's, where's that money ended up?
In the Bridge Project Fund. That was part of the budget. It comes out of the capital improvement fund from the transfer to that account. This is the mechanism to do that.
$20,000 every year.
Any other questions? All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Unanimously approved for the transfers. Regular business item number 10 is mayoral appointments. I would like to appoint three members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to appoint Rich Dane, reappoint Rich Dane, reappoint Dave Huser, reappoint Bill Wilson. On the Historic Preservation Commission, I would like to reappoint Mary Meyer and appoint Chris Brunkhorst. Is there a motion?
My motion to move me our appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Council discussion.
I would just ask that, you know, I know we got these on noon today. And yes, maybe they don't need to be on the website, but it would be nice for council if we got them a week in advance. Prior administration, you send them out a week in advance so that council could contact the mayor if they had any issues or anything. I think it'd be rather embarrassing for a person to get appointed and get voted down for some unknown reason that maybe mayor didn't know about when they were appointed. But, I mean, I'm just saying, it'd be nice to get them ahead of time rather than the day of we vote on them, so.
I thought I took my marching order from the past mayor. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I misunderstood. I thought he was, because he was doing, when we were meeting, he was doing, going into.
Yeah, he would, I mean, like, like Wes said, there, there was one time that, I don't know, I don't even know if it was the last mayor, but there was an issue, someone on the council had an issue with someone that was going to get appointed. So having, you know, they could hash that out beforehand and not, you know, it's not, not a big deal, but.
I'd never thought of it like that.
Yeah, it's more to protect the people that are getting, you know, people are putting themselves out there to, to serve and.
I moved it up from just a surprise to.
Yes, you did.
Give me credit, man. Give me credit.
I'll give you that credit. You did do that.
Okay. Further discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, approved. We have before us Board and Commission reports. The W has its monthly revenue report to us for the month of March. Any comments officially received? The Bremer-Waverly Law Enforcement Board minutes from April 13th have been submitted to us. Any comments officially received? Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from April 16th. Any comments officially received? Historic Preservation Commission minutes from April 23rd. Comments officially received? The monthly financial report from April. Comments officially received? The Waverly Senior Center calendar for May has been received. Any comments officially received? Staff comments?
Just a few, Mayor. Chamber outing is this Thursday afternoon, a fun annual event for folks to support the Waverly City, or City Chamber. Feels like a city chamber sometimes, the Waverly Chamber. My brain quit working. We continue working.
We continue working on gentlemen of the road, as you'll notice in the packet tonight. We had some maps showing First Street, a hold harmless agreement with our agreement to get reimbursed for costs, and a block party permit, so people have some more information there. Volunteers are requested, and go, go online to sign up for that. Monday is Memorial Day, so the city office will be closed in observance of those who have lost their lives in service to the country and other loved ones. And then we also have some updates from the DOT on the railroad crossings on 20th Street. They do recommend applying for state funding for putting gates and signals there, so I'll send in an application for those two crossings. And we're also continuing to work with the Iowa Economic Development Authority's energy team, and we're meeting monthly and looking at project updates that would provide a significant return on investment to reduce our energy consumption, primarily right now around lighting and, and utilities like hot water and building HVAC.
Progress on the library?
Yes, they're moving right along, and they're on schedule to open back up, I believe, on the 20th.
Second.
Yeah.
They'll hit that? Okay, thank you. Any other staff comments? Comments to the council, Dan, Dan, or David?
Quick question. Who is communicating with the East Bremer merchants as far as the road shutdown and how they're going to get clients in and out during that period?
The chamber and, and the city met today, Chamber and I met today, and so we're putting together a letter, frequently asked questions, and probably going to be setting up a all-group meeting in addition to personal visits.
Okay. I just had a few people question that, and then a couple real quick things. Last week was National Police Officer Awareness Week, and they had their memorial, and this week is National EMS Week, so just kind of a shout-out to those two organizations for being part of the community and providing the service that they need, and unfortunately, sometimes that comes with some very personal impacts with loss of life, so, thank you.
Thank you, Cosman. Cosman Lampy?
I just want to remind staff and, you know, citizens of Waverly that, you know, that the Dry Run, Dry Run Creek project is, there's a lot of heavy equipment there, and they're very effective at moving earth, and the, one thing that we need to keep in mind is that they also have very strong flush magnets that attract small children, and, you know, if, we need to keep a watch for a high outpost from the contractors, from city staff, that, you know, school's going to be out here in a couple weeks, or when is it going to be out? Maybe it's this week.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. You know, there's going to be a lot of kids running around, and they're drawn to these machines, watching them, just as I am, I guess I always do.
Me too.
They need to keep back far enough that, you know, they're, they're not a hazard to themselves and, and to the operators.
And I think, hopefully, we have a lot of parents watching, and they will be watching during the week, and to spread the news amongst their friendship groups. That's a very, very good thought. If we don't think about it, that's when it's going to happen. So, thank you. Councilor Resnick?
Are we filling the pool?
We are.
Is it good ice over this week, or?
We are, we're just testing the new heaters right now.
David's volunteering.
Not to heat the water, but we're testing to see if they'll warm up stuff, yes.
Yeah, so we, it's interesting, lower-bird plunge. This weekend, I had soccer games and baseball games all over different towns, and families were kind of sitting around, kind of reminiscing on how nice Waverly's facilities are and, and compared to where we're at, so it's kind of nice to hear. Also, one of the places where you're at, they're, they're looking at their swimming pool, and they thought it was kind of neat, so they had an opportunity to give an advertisement for ours, and it was opening up soon, and so I think people are excited to see the improvements, so.
We're opening the 30th.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Tim?
Just update on construction projects. One was the pool, and just as far as that, but Mike, as far as, can he give us an update on Second Avenue and First Ave, First Street, and some of those, just where we're, what we're looking time-wise on some of those? Some of the digging ups of our streets?
Yep, we're, well, let's start with First Street Northwest. They're, got the storm shore extended across First Street, so they're doing cleanup and prep work. I think the concrete crew is scheduled to come in on Wednesday, and that should take care of not only the street, but I think they're also going to look at trying to get the sidewalk in Coleman Park put back as well. It's a quick clearing concrete, so we're anticipating that the roadway will be open to the public again on Friday, assuming no unforeseen problems with that. Second Avenue Southwest, we're still on schedule to be in a position to have paving done by mid-June. Again, the goal is to get that paved prior to the music festival, but we are dealing with some utility conflicts. Dry Run Creek is progressing, we're on schedule. We hope to have Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue roadways back by mid-June. Again, that's, that's a target, with the priority being on Fifth Avenue. Again, we want to get some of those other streets, avenues opened back up again as soon as possible. They are starting to work around the St. John's Church area, but within the next four weeks, we should see things being kind of wrapped up and finished down in the, in the Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue location.
And the Parkway?
They've got a little bit of sidewalk work left to do. Otherwise, it's pavement markings, street signage, and the final seeding and restoration work. Waverly Utilities is down there installing the street lighting and getting that energized here, so I'm thinking it's probably, the, again, this is alternative, please bear in mind, subject to change, but I think we're looking at a Monday, June 1st opening.
I'm going to write that down. Mike says June 1st.
Seven people took note.
I did say what year.
And if Russ had a pen, he would have too.
The, the only other thing, point I had, mention of Memorial Day coming up next week, Saturday morning, is flag raising out at Harlington, and I've been out there the last number of years with scouts going out and helping a number of veterans and, and groups that are, are doing that, and I'm sure any other, anybody else that wants to come out and help do that. It is a interesting time to be out there and get that up, and, and it really makes an impressive sight when those are, those are up and flowing in, in the, in the wind on, over that weekend, and then always a nice parade and ceremony out there on Monday. Encourage people to do, deal with that.
Thank you. Pro temp. Chris?
I was informed via text message that school is actually done next Thursday instead of Wednesday. There you go. That's all.
Yes. Mr. Gray?
I have nothing. I have a couple of questions on recycling, and I wondered if we could put it on the August study session to do, since it's been a year that we've had the new co-mingling and curbside pickup. If we could just have a study session where we get updates on how much more recycling tonnage we've picked up over the last year compared to the year before, now that we allow co-mingling and have the bins, and how much that maybe has offset our tonnage to the landfill and garbage, that kind of stuff? Be kind of cool to have a study session with some stats on that. I know it's pretty heavily used, and I may see a lot of blue bins around town, so.
I know I've reduced my, I've gone down to a little can, and I never used to recycle. Now I have a gigantic thing full all the time, so just going by mine.
It'd be interesting to see too, like, how much, if we know the recycling center, do we count the tonnage there too, compared to what we're picking up, and how that maybe is switch-watched, or, that's not our good word, but you know what I mean?
No, no. Same.
Talk about the new garbage cans, I reach out and grab the cans, too. There you go.
Russ?
For me, thanks for the invite.
Yeah, it's been nice having you. Two times to see our city trying to be the city, so it's good to have you a part of it. Mayor's comments. Kathy Schutte is the senior center, center new manager, and we, many of us know her and respect her, and very happy that she's there. I happened to go to their spring luncheon, and they had many more people than even expected, so it's good to see that one off to a good start. Communications, we have...
Just included a thank-you note that the police department received.
Okay. Adjournment, please.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.